That gets fired.
All right, well, reading the, uh, our regular scheduled meeting, our county council. And the next item on the agenda that we have is from additional appropriation of the plan commission and Greg informs me that's not going to be there, so we'll move to the next one, which is the maximus update.
Well, I've given you a slip of paper this evening. And we had a meeting with a commissioner, a councilman, and both elected officials on where we are with the books. And at that meeting, Beth asked that I put something together like this for you to show you, and, excuse me, I just came up the stairs, where the hours have went, where we are in the records, and we're still a long way. I have spreadsheets that I have on my system that I'm using to find the differences between the ledgers and the cashbook. And I've gotten, in locating differences, I've gotten all the way through 2011 and determined where the differences are. As far as balancing those differences out, I am through the end of April, and we still have $109 difference. And I believe when we took it over, there was over $99,000 difference in those ledgers at that time. So, we're making headway, but there's still a lot to do. We're still working on making sure that everything that's in the bank is in the ledgers, identifying those. And they're identified to a point through December of last year, and the treasurer's been working on those in 2012. And then I've been working more on seeing where the differences are in the ledgers to the cashbook. And that's what you see before you is the differences between the ledgers and the cashbook. And down at the bottom on the hours, Beth had requested that you see the difference between training hours and hours, we're looking at the funds. So those that are kind of highlighted in lighter green, those are training. Those are the hours that we've actually spent on training.
You have any questions for Jackie?
Yeah, Jackie approached.
We don't have an official request, right? What are we considering?
Well, the commissioners are not going to make official requests. Theirs is, they made the request before. Their status is, at their meeting, I'm sorry, that you, this board needs to decide if they're going to additional appropriate money. Otherwise, the 30 hours that we have left, I will spend showing the two elected officials where I am, if they can move forward. There's a lot of work.
There's a lot of work. Bonita, have you got anything you can add?
Uh, yes.
Can you, I hate to ask, can you stand up? It's Kim. I'm sorry.
That's fine. I've been here a long time, and I've never been in this situation. And naturally, I want to get it fixed. And Jackie has spent a lot of time, and I think it will get straightened out, I know one way or another, but I think it's essential that she continue, because if not, where it stands still, well, time for one thing, they have to continue to move forward while trying to go back and find, you know, what the problem might be. And Linda's already passed about 180 hours in comp time, that we don't have the time for it to take, because we have got to get this straightened out. So I think it's important that this project continue.
Now, on the flip side of the treasurer, the treasurer is balanced to the banks. Her cashbook is balanced to the banks as of January, January 31st. And then she's been working onward from that. Suzanne Miller, which is retired from state border accounts, was able to help with that back a few months ago. And then she left, and she may never check with us again. But she was able to help Bonita. Bonita and Linda worked many, many hours on this and tried to find out where the issues are. We still have, and we know, EFTs from the state that are not in our ledgers. They're in the cash side, because they've hit the bank, but they may not be identified yet. And so, that is one major issue we have, because right now, we actually could be operating on a lot less money than what we actually have, you know, showing our books. You know, I mean, if you really want to get down to the bottom of it, our 2012 budget and what we are looking at doing in 2013, we don't have a base date. We don't know if those numbers are anywhere close. All we know now is up through April the 11th, April of 2011, we are in balance with the ledgers at that time in the bank. So I think from my so far, you can tell I feel we need to forward on. I feel like we're right in the middle of this, and until, at least if we, if we can, you know, Jackie's proposed another 200 hours, you know, if we need to alter that or whatever. I know she's been just in that first quarter, 100 hours, just in that first quarter.
Well, in that first quarter, or in that 100 hours, I found the differences and got through the first three months, because January was in balance. So I've got the differences identified between the ledgers and the cashbook.
Can I ask real quick, just to make sure, you said April of 2011?
That's correct.
So we're still...
You as a banker probably sit there going, "Please, we have been like that too."
So you still, there's like 15 or 16 months still a good...
Yes, and we're trying to fund, we funded a 2012 budget, we're operating off the monies that, when Bonita and Suzanne were able to at least balance with the bank, I felt a little relief, because I knew we had money in the bank, you know, and it was accountable for.
I honestly believe you have more money in the bank than what's showing in the ledgers. It's just which fund is it in?
Which fund is it in?
Those EFTs sitting in the bank are revenue that aren't reflected in the ledgers yet. But which fund it's in, that's what we're determining, which ones of those EFTs. We know the numbers of them, but we've got to go back and find what there were at that point in time to know where to put them. But let me explain something else, if I might too, sort of why I think it got to where it is or was, because I believe we are moving forward. But the application in every software out there has this same issue. It's not anything that's wrong with your software, please don't take it that there's something wrong with the software. But you have the ability to go back in the software and fact it. And if you saw the spreadsheets that are too tiny to read when I print them and too large to show, there are things that in September, we went back to February and voided effective February, which is why the treasurer is having so much difficulty getting them in balance, because she doesn't know when the transaction took place. And that's what I'm identifying. I'm looking at all of those receipts and disbursements day by day and seeing when they don't come back to what's on the current reports of what misses from the cashbook. And when I identify those, I can go out and see that in September, something got avoided effective February 4th, which at that point in time throws Bonita off from then till September, which is why it is so difficult for them to find these errors. You almost have to do, go through the whole year and identify all of the changes, and then do a little jigsaw puzzle, going back and finding what days those affected to see where they were in balance.
I know, as a councilperson, the hours that I've spent on the ledger, I know Brad has spent many hours on the ledger, and Jay, as the county commissioner, has spent many hours, and Suzanne has spent hours. So, you know, combine all of our hours together, I hate to see what they are, on top of Bonita and her office, and the overtime that's been paid in the auditor's office, you know. So, I feel like we're, if we don't get to a place where we're comfortable, that we're going to constantly be going back to this place over and over and over.
I've got, I've got concern that we keep throwing money after it and assume it's going to get fixed, because we have good data, January 1 of '11, and we spent X amount of hours and time combined to get to April. At some point, we pay Lau a lot of money for their support, we're going to see some bills on that tonight that weren't anticipated. We paid Suzanne Miller, we paid the elected official and staff, and now we're paying Maximus, and it's still open-ended. We have no, no time that we're going to say, "Yeah, it's over, it's done." When I asked the first question when this was brought up at the commissioners, I asked, "When do we know that the data's good?" And we don't. So, if we could hire, we're going to potentially, 200 more hours is another 20,000. That's $50,000 to be where. If that brings us up another six months, we come back again and say, "Another 20,000 for six months," or "Another 30,000 for six months," I mean, it's too open-ended. I know there's training in there, but at some point, the office has got to pick it up and go with it. I don't know of any other offices that get, you know, this much specific help. I know we're in the hole, but the money, I know there was one avenue that was supposed to be explored when this started, and that was the potential of utilizing the bond from the auditor to bring in some revenue to take care of this situation. And if the commissioners will pursue that, and we can get some revenue back from that, then I'm okay with it.
It was the bond and the errors and omissions of the insurance liability insurance.
Right. But if that, if that doesn't come to fruition, I'm not in favor of taking general fund dollars and putting it toward this problem month after month and hoping that it'll get fixed. There was multiple times that when reports were given, "How are we doing? You think you're going to make it?" And everything was hunky-dory, and now we're down to 270 hours utilized, 30 left, and we still have a big hole, and we're not anywhere near where we need to be. So I'm not in favor of general fund dollars continuing this effort. If we can get a refund of some sort out of the insurance or the bond, then I would, I'd be happy to consider it. But right now, not general fund dollars.
I'd like to say that when we were approached with this situation, it was $30,000. And I think the sentiment then was that it was going to be able to be done in that amount of time. If I had known then what I know now, that it would be 50,000, I would never have signed that contract, because to me, $50,000 is obscene to say that we have to spend that kind of money. And it's not going to Jackie, it's going to Maximus. So that's an overhead. So we're not, you know, we're not getting, you know, the hours that she's putting in, she's not getting all that money. So we're paying a firm for their overhead. So, you know, I, I agree that it has, we have to go forward, but this business of just on and on and on of spending, I, I'm not in support of that either. And on the bond, Brad, I've asked and asked and asked, and I still want that responsibility to turn. So, that bond has never been canceled, it's never been pursued, but I know. So, but as you said, I think we pay Lau $75,000 a year for support. So, I said in the commissioner meeting, there has to be a time where you cut the equal strays. I just think $50,000 in the face of what you're going to be seeing with these extra Lau bills on the additional appropriation is about, what, another $25,000? Too much money?
We haven't got to that yet, to even discuss what this Lau bill's for. That, well, that was an additional appropriation request that was just handed to us tonight, which was filed with the auditor today. This says, this is $16,773 as of September 1st, overage and trended use, time used for the past two years. Two years, well, you know...
That's, that's not all the bill either, there's one missing from that.
And it's for the past two years.
And it's $10,000.
Going into 2011, we doubled the technical services for the reason that Lau needed to come in and help. That was, I believe, doubled. There's certain factors. But it was all budgeted in the budget.
But right now, we have two bills outstanding with Lau.
So when they did the reconciliation, there was, they obviously had been...
Yeah. One's for $10,962, and that, it was due on 7/31, presented on 5/1. And the second one for $17,874, and it was due 7/31, and was presented on 5/1. So there's $27,000 Lau that's not been paid. So that's what I'm saying, is that this keeps surfacing, we're paying for a lot of help in a lot of different places. Some of it, at some point, has got to give.
Well, let's go back to this Lau then. What did we actually have budgeted for their services? Are we over? We're over, of course, but who authorized that? You go over.
Well, what happened was, you took, this is in the IT budget, and the Schneider web posting was taken out of the auditor law, and, well, $10,000. That's why there's no revenue.
So I think the additional appropriation really needs to go back and be for the Schneider web posting. We need to do a request for that, and see what we are in the budgeted line item for auditor Lau. Because that, that was accurate, what was budgeted, $20,300. That should have been, that should not include.
Right, that was a contractual amount, but you see the Schneider web posting was taken under, and then there's still...
My report only goes through, the last one I got was, this is dated August, August 13.
And then there's one last quarter for Schneider too, for $2,300, so there's over $10,000 taken out of that.
So, the additional appropriation really needs to be for the Schneider and not for the auditor Lau.
Except the Schneider's been paid.
No, the Lau technical services, they, every time they're called, and every time they have an onsite meeting, a training session, that's charged to the Kelly, and they will reconcile the services and provide a statement showing how much you're under and how much you're over, and that's where that is coming from. We had budgeted $15,604 for 2012, had $15,604 dollars.
I think that was spent the first week of January.
And that was paid.
Right, and now there's another one for Schneider.
I don't know how many hours that's for, I'm thinking it's for maybe somewhere around 125,000.
So maybe around 500.
But how is it they're going back and charging for two years?
Well, but this...
Services within the last two years.
These two bills that I have here, you've got, it's for July 1st of '12 through December 31st of '12. The $10,962 relates to financial suite system, software support and maintenance. Financial suite. It says general ledger, user queries, payroll, and it's software support, you've got your phone in, internet support on software, you've got the software modifications and updates, correction of software problems, it's all dial-in support via the modem. Okay? Then the big one for the $17,874 is for property tax system. So you got financial system, now you got property tax. So there's two separate claims that we haven't paid, that's $27,000, $28,000. And that again is for July 1st of '12 through December 31st, so it's the second half of the year on that.
Is the property tax, is that for the entire year?
Right, but we don't have money in the pay, we're out.
Then what's on the treasurer's, like, trying to get this to be paid, so there's 16,000, 16,000 is still in there.
$16,500.
Right, that's 15,000.
It looks like they came here when we didn't make the call.
Right.
Well, I question why, when we were afforded $33,100...
Because he paid on time, he got a discount, and it wasn't paid on time.
Yeah, they offer a discount, $16,550 if we paid it before the end of July. So, we got the bill May 1, so you get to pay June and July, three months to pay it, we could have paid $16,550, and now we're going to pay $17,874.
Well, we should be able to at least pay the $16,550 from that line, that money should be there.
Lau has, has offered to accept the smaller amount if we, if we agree to make, could take that, pay that bill.
Where are we thinking about paying it from?
Treasurer.
The treasurer's Lau line, it's account 39111.
Yeah, yeah, because it's, it's there. That one's there now.
I've got a concern similar to Brad's. Beth made the comment that it gets to a place where we're comfortable, and we don't know where that's at yet. And I don't know if Jackie can answer this, but how can we guarantee that $200 are going to bring this up to current? No one said that we will or would be able to do that.
And I made a statement on that question to the commissioner, "I can't guarantee you that." Obviously, if we could guarantee it, it would have been done. But when, when we originally started talking about it, we were, we were September, county attorney had said September, and then we backed the scope up, and I had made the statement that I would hope that we could get it done. But, and we were running pretty good until we started trying to get into the differences. Getting into the differences because of the ability to void, the way it's been voided, it's extremely time-consuming to find those errors. And they're not errors, those differences.
The other thing that comes to my mind is this board is responsible for watching the financial matters, and I think I shared this example with Beth and a couple of people the other night, that I look at things a little bit differently sometimes. And if I were to have a general contractor come to my house, inside my house, give me an estimate, in his professional opinion, that it cost me $10,000 to complete that, and he got into it, and there was a header that was rotted, and, you know, the job was finished, and it cost me $11,000, you know, me and the contractor, we would have a professional, would have a conversation, but I would probably pay that, understanding that those things cannot be seen, or they're hidden behind the old siding, and that we can't see until we tear the old off. But if the same contractor would come to me and give me a bill for $16,000 instead of $10,000, then number one, I, well, that person would never do work for me again. And number two, I would tell all of my friends to be careful when they give you an estimate. So, these are the things that concern me, just because I'm responsible for watching the fiscal matters of this county. And I think I also shared another example, but, you know, when, when one works with a consultant, it's not unusual that they do go over, but I've been in situations where it's, it's costed, the original estimate was $80,000, it ended up being $160,000. And, and I don't think that's good. So, you know, the other alternative, we're looking for solutions, we need to be people of solutions, and, you know, the other solution is to tell Greg and his staff to venture on, let's move forward. But I just, my concern is similar to Brad's, is that we don't have any definite, and Jackie's even admitted, we don't have anything definite about where we're going to be specifically if we do another $20,000.
And if you realize that the first $30,000 is coming out of edit funds, and the commissioners have edit funds that were appropriated, if they felt very strongly that this was necessary, they would have appropriated edit money and kept right on going. If, if they were that strong about it, they would, they have money available, they could have, they could have just signed the contract. So, I don't...
I just agree. I feel like they, they feel like they, they didn't want to use the edit funds, they came to us and asked us to alter it and spin it somewhere else. I think this is their way of saying, "We need to step up to the plate and find another fund if we want to forward it on." I don't think there was an issue there, as if they felt it was needed or not, I think that, that's not a question.
Well, if we consider all the edit projects, that, we've talked about several of them the past couple of months, all the different wants and needs, you would think that something this significant, supposedly finding out where we're at, would be, would automatically move to the higher priority, because we already spent $30,000. And I think one of the commissioners even commented that everything would be lost if we didn't, or something to that effect, I don't know, that doesn't make any sense. I don't know, Bob could probably, but, you know, that doesn't make any sense. That, you know, starting a project and not completing it is not good. I just don't think we can stop here. I think we've got to get far enough so we know where we're really at, so we got, I think we owe it to the county to have, I heard this.
When I, if we stop now, I don't think the books will, it can be several more years if they're ever, there will probably never be like.
How, how much will it spend?
What, what's it going to cost for a hundred hour?
A hundred hours is ten thousand. It's a hundred dollars an hour.
I mean total, to, to be accurate.
I have no idea how much it will.
Oh, I'm not asking what's the cost, I'm asking how much you're willing to spend. That's a different question.
I don't want to spend anything, but if, or you do, because it's stuff in a situation where, and how, how do we fix the book? I think most of the people on this panel will realize how messed up they are.
Now, how much did Suzanne Miller charge per?
Oh, was it twenty-eight hundred, twenty-two hundred?
Twenty-three hundred.
So what was it?
Twenty-three hundred.
Twenty.
Per hour, and what did she charge per hour? I don't know. Oh, she spent a lot of time.
Yeah, she spent a lot of hour.
Didn't get paid that much.
I mean, you know.
Could we look for something else less than a hundred thou, a hundred dollars now? Or it's not out there?
Well, Jackie's already familiar with the systems. She's very familiar with the plans of what's in her experience and what is supposed to be happening in this county. She knows where the revenues are supposed to be posted. A, a lot of it is just getting in and digging and figuring out what is happening, getting the votes out here, then going back and attacking situations. And she's done a difficult job because she's trying to balance months that the treasurer thought they weren't balanced, didn't realize. What was happening is that months down the road, in September, transactions were being posted back, six months or so, because the ones have not been looked at.
We scrutinized the sheriff on a part-time line, and we requested sixteen thousand dollars, we gave him eight. Eight thousand dollars we haggled over and talked about an employee who was working hourly as a part-time employee, and we have no qualms with just shelling out fifty thousand dollars. That's more than everybody makes except for like maybe three people in, in the county on the payroll. And it's not even a full-time position, and it doesn't go to the individual, we're paying the company, and we don't know that we're going to have an answer. After fifty thousand dollars, there's no guarantee, and we're going to have data that we can go forward with. It could be sixty, it could be seventy, it could be ninety. So that's what I'm saying, where, where's the end? Where do you want to say that that's all we're going to pay? Because we might as well decide what it is and just put it all out there and say, go for it, because we're not sure we're ever going to have an accurate answer. I think we've got to lean on the auditor to learn the system and go through and look at the things, and it's going to have to be figured out. There is no simple solution, we're sure of that, and the money right now is the issue. So if we can't guarantee that we're going to have some type of workable numbers that we can rest assured, that we can set and go forward with, how can we just keep spending
Well, I think this has been a hard decision for all of us. We've never been put in, my thirty-some years of government, I've never seen anything of the likes. And I hope that no other office holder ever has to fall into something like this again. If we had to hire an outside company to come in and audit those books before we could get an auditor to take that position, I would assure you we'd be paying more than fifty thousand dollars. We're going to be lucky, and I mean lucky, to see where we come out with their audit. And maybe that'll be a revenue, or an avenue we want to wait and see, where the auditor, you know, check with the auditor before we make a decision and see with State Department Counts, what he is able to do. But I know he's banging his head against the wall.
Well, that's a point, that's a point.
He is not going to, he is not going to give us numbers and say, this needs to be here, this needs to be there. He is going to show the negative balances or wherever the county's going to be written up, and I guarantee you there's going to be big write-ups on this county this year for two thousand and eleven, and he'll say, okay.
For, for such an important issue that we function the whole county around, that's exactly why there needs to be some aggression put toward the insurance and the bond. Some aggressive pursuit of that as a remedy. If we have revenue come in from that, I got no problem with it. If we don't have revenue from it, then I think we need to do, stay where we're at and move forward. But with, without that revenue, why do we even have a bond? Why do we have the insurance if we're not going to use it to back us up when we need it? Worst situation you've ever seen in thirty-three years. Somebody's got to pursue that, and I think that's the executive. We have one executive here tonight, we're missing two. So once again, if it's such an important issue and they feel strongly that we need to do this, get on the horse, get that avenue explored, find out if there's any remedy. Otherwise.
And Jay, he's not got any response with the county attorney. Did you, did you check with Steve Smith on that too?
No. I told him that if he didn't think we could collect on it, then we needed to cancel it.
Because the bond's still being paid.
Right. He said, don't cancel it yet, because we still may be able to collect it, and that's all I've heard.
Well, Beth, you brought a good point, and we haven't discussed it yet, but, you know, we talk about these errors and how we're going to deal with them in the future. I mean, we, we do get audited by the State Department of Accounts, and that takes place yearly. And so, you know, that's one, that's one thing good at the twain happening, they're going to catch some of those things and.
And if it had not been that the fact.
They'd have been exhausted this month.
No, this was right, and if it had not been that those funds on Bonita's side, that those banks were in balance at that point, as far as the actual depositories, I think, I, I would be surprised if they would even go do our audit. They probably would have said, you guys straighten out, when you get your numbers where we can look at them, we'll come back. And we would have been paying more than fifty thousand dollars.
And that's what Suzanne said to begin with. She wasn't sure that they went audit.
That is the only thing that saved us getting audit, in my, in my opinion only, which doesn't mean a lot, but in my opinion, is the fact that we had Bonita's banks in balance. If they'd have been in the mess they were in when she and I and Suzanne first sit down on those bank, on those accounts, we would not have been having the auditors here down.
And years ago, they used to went helping these auditors. But I went to him last July, and we had one on site, and told him I was having trouble balancing with the auditor. And he said, well, you have to find it. I said, well, I know I have to find it, but can you give me a suggestion as what to do? And he said, no, I can't, because I'll probably have to audit you next year. So we kept looking, and September, I called Indianapolis State Department of Accounts and told her that I was having trouble balancing with the auditor, what can I do? And she told me the same thing, you have to find it. Said, I know I have to find it, but somebody help me. So.
They will put, they pretty much put it all on you.
They do.
You're, you're the elected official, and you've got to fix it. You've got to figure out a way to fix it.
So what dollar figure will this cost us if we don't continue with Maximus? We know?
That's, that's it. We, we don't know where books are, I mean, as to what balance. We have nothing really to say that we're concrete to work with other than us to April of two thousand and eleven. That's the only thing you can say to our ledgers, and that's every one of these funds that we're concrete with, is April of two thousand and eleven. Anything else beyond there, we're working in the unknowns. And it's going to continue like that because we don't know where we are at.
Jackie, was your, the, the first two hundred hours that you had, is that by two hundred hours at a moment? Or was that only from January, from April of twenty-eleven?
No, I've done a lot of other fund things also. I, I went in and worked on detailed funds, seat of fund, the catch-up funds, settlement fund, several different funds are included in that. In, in the ledgers themselves, I've spent about a hundred and forty hours comparing the ledgers to the bank and the ledgers to the cashbook.
How many hours do you have on training? I do give that maybe.
I'm sorry.
Thirty?
I didn't see about it.
I think there's thirty, or thirty-two in the green section, is that right?
Yeah.
If it had not been for us putting money into this, going with this, down this direction, we would have been in worse shape with our nine-one-one. And getting that back into, to where we speak, because none of us realized that, well, we had all our areas, we knew the receipts weren't going in, that eight thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars which is bound into my brain, but it wouldn't be in put in the right areas. And I know of what between the, and I, including Brad, Jane and I, what we found in ledgers, then Jackie found even more of it than what we had found. So, you know, like I say, again, you know, none of us wants to spend money like this, but I've never seen a mess like this. And I'm just going to call it a mess, if it is.
It is, and I've never seen it like it either, you know.
And I don't know how many times she, Bonita and I have just said, I don't know, if we had a dollar for every time we could get us all out there. So I, I just. And to say to put it over back on the auditor, the auditor's already stressed, they've got a new auditor trying to learn, you've got staff that, you know, I, I, unless you want to hire a part-time person to come in here and do it, then you're just giving out money. So.
Or we could find.
If it's not done right.
Or we could find another consultant that can give us some more definite answer that we're going to get for our twenty thousand dollars. Because at this point, we're getting ready to vote for twenty thousand dollars to spend and aggressive, we don't know if it's going to be good enough to make decisions on it. We don't even know.
Well, when we started this, you know, this, this cycle on the election, we had a new clerk, didn't give that official any extra help.
But we did.
We had a new sheriff, you know, I mean, at.
This is totally different. I don't know how you can compare that to, I didn't have training when I went into the court treasurer's office, and it was three months behind when I went into that. But to, for someone to walk into an office that's in the shape this has been in, and not to give them some type of support here, or us to take the lead, we, we have responsibilities too to make sure these books, these numbers are right.
Well, you say some type of support, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. We had Suzanne Miller, we had Lao, we had Maximus for three hundred hours. Is that not some kind of support? I mean, how, that's, that's support, I mean, we haven't left them hanging high and dry.
Yeah, the bottom line is that we move forward, I understand that. I understand that. And I think I can make my point there.
Anybody else have any comments?
I'd like to hear what Madonna and Vicki have to say on this situation.
Well, I don't know. I think we need to go ahead and try to get it straightened out. And if they don't get it done in the next, what is it, their one, twenty hours?
Two hundred.
Two hundred hours. Then we probably need to try to do something else. If you bring a new company in, how are they going to know what the other company's now? And they will spend a lot of time there. But I still think we ought to do something about the bonds.
I agree.
Why have them if we don't use them?
I'll just call myself.
I mentioned it at the beginning, that we need to check the bond.
Jenny has, has a lawyer touched that issue?
I've asked him to several times, and he's, all he's told me is, don't cancel it. I think, I think that the bond maybe will only kick in if there are criminal charges filed, and it will. That's kind of what he intimated to me, and that's why I did what I do. I filed the complaint, so that the bond, we have a chance to get the bond. Jackie?
Well, I think it's a proper use of the bond, you know, and I think it's absolutely, you know, relevant to the situation. So we have a problem, we have an avenue to fix it, then we should be pursuing that. And to look at general fund dollars, I, that's what I'm saying, I just think we keep throwing money after it, but there's a reason why you have a bond, there's a reason why you have the insurance, and then, and that's why I think we have to pursue.
But I, I don't know, but in, and Jackie, you've had more experience with this than I have, or Suzanne, all these bonds, my understanding when I was an office holder, had my large bond with the city, that it only covered, it covered not, it didn't cover if I made, I didn't know my job, and I made errors. It covered if there was money missing, if I made an error that cost the city. It, it was more of a.
It, it would cover, it would cover a loss.
Yes, it didn't, and we can't prove that at this point because things have been, they're just not in the right areas, it's the bookkeeping side of it. Now, if we get down to the end of this and find that, yes, and I think that's where John's going, we find that there is a loss, you know, then, then that's a whole different, that's a whole different avenue. The errors and omissions might be something we want to look at also. Because it does cover, if I would have gone out and made a decision to do something and it was something that cost the city, then therefore my errors and omissions would have kicked in as an office holder. So it might be just the way, I, I, I don't know, I've never had to file a bond on a bond or anything like that, but I, I know when I was in office, it was to cover me that way if anything happened like that.
Well, I'd like to see that pursued.
Oh, I would too, I would too. We all agreed at our very first meeting that we wanted to see that, and I believe the errors and omissions was spoken about too. So I, I have, I agree totally with Ashley.
There's something we can set and wait for, but we need to get our books up to date so we know where we are. We can't wait another so many months to rat and not know where we are. You have any comments or questions, concerns?
Okay, I make a motion that we, um, forward on to the county commissioners to enter into the agreement with Maximus for an additional two hundred hours, that's twenty thousand dollars, and that we additional appropriate, um, for those funds to be taken somewhere in the day.
I'll second that motion.
Only because we don't know our balance in general fund.
Is that to have a pass for the public hearing? So we're going to sign a contract with no money appropriated?
No, we're not. We're not doing that.
And I was sent my.
I was before.
I was sent my, um, request and would change that to that we, at our next meeting, that we, that would come in and transfer into for twenty thousand dollars for actual service. If we don't already have that, then ready day for Maximus.
I'll second that. Second, any discussion?
The rest of the.
You know what?
Can you look on that, see if you can. Wait just a minute, let's see what we got on Monday, let's see what we got.
Where are you looking at transferring from?
I'm just looking at, hang on.
You looking at the ledgers, Suzanne?
Yeah, there's contractual services, we, we did this appropriate twenty-one thousand five thirty-five, that's been spent, ambulance service, two hundred thirty-two thousand, and isn't all of that going to be spent this year? There's nothing else appropriated that I would need.
We don't normally appropriate extra in there.
Well.
Well, I'll go back, that'd be additional appropriate, the twenty thousand dollars. I think Jackie shot thirty hours left, and now getting through, we'll advertise by next meeting, and at that point then the commissioners, which we saw a three thousand center for Florida.
I will send on those thirty hours till you know what to do, so I know whether to either move forward or train somebody.
So, if we sell the hours, the month, does it don't matter?
I'm not saying it must not matter, but they're not gonna prove it until we have the funds in place. Unless the other two commissioners move forward with it, but I think a vote, if we have a vote here that we're willing to move forward, I would hope that anyone that votes in favor of extending that contract would vote in favor of the funding of it.
Would it be easier to take it out of edit, or will it be faster?
I don't know, we can, they have to. It would be faster.
So, is there a motion? I was at the end, I'm sorry. You did that, right?
I make a motion that we forward on to the commissioners, favorable recommendation to extend that contract with Maximus, and if we advertise in our next meeting, it'll be twenty thousand dollars to come from rainy day, as additional appropriation. Any second please. And that would be a contract, contractual services.
Second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda is solid waste district budget, there's Beth is here. How we did it? Do we, do we have something else under present or not?
It's just, we had, it's really, I'm here for support, and it's, you're our fiscal body, and we're just following the protocol, the state.
So, you don't have any additional while we do it?
I have a real project.
Okay, all right. We already did that.
But, but the, our budget was not advertised with the county units, and I understood this was to be a public hearing. So, I don't know if you need to open for public hearing.
We advertised the public hearing, or-
Solid waste.
Solid waste, yeah.
Did your advertisement say seven-thirty?
It said seven.
Seven.
So, we may need to redo this at seven.
No, I, I mean, I, I think you're fine.
You can have it before, but you can have it later.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're fine. I'm just saying we're open to a public hearing, we have to make a, we have to make the motion to approve it.
Were there any changes to the last period?
We, we created some different line items to make, you know, this, the taxpayers can go on and see all of this line items, so rather than have just blanket fund, we've got now hazardous waste, we have free on, we, we have broken down more, but for the last two years, we have not requested more money, we're trying to use wisely what we get.
Okay, so my question. Thank you. All right, so at this time, we'll open up for a public hearing, to discuss the solid waste budget. Any comments from the citizens, neighbors of fifty? John, sure. Look like you have something there. I have a motion then, to close the public hearing.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so now we'll discuss the solid waste district budget. Any comments or questions from the council? Beth, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the two thousand thirteen budget for the county solid waste in the manner which it was presented.
All right, thank you, Beth. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye, same.
Suzanne, abstains. All right, well, thank you, Beth.
Just clarify, she abstains because she's on board, not us.
I'm not opposed, I'm her parent. I think it's a great budget.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have Skip up next, right?
Sort of spike.
Or spike, I'm sorry.
Okay. As you all are aware, the commissioners asked us some time ago to look at some long-term space and facility needs for both the courthouse and the jail. We've put a lot of work into that, that people are here to talk to me, and that's our team with RQAW, and I'll introduce those guys, put your hand up. Over in the corner is Sanjay Patel with RQAW, Bill Shepherd with PMSI, Barry Malone with Unbal, and Mike Ollie with RQW. We, our methodology in this whole thing is we put a lot of time in meetings with county officials, office, people in the office, the staff, the sheriff, his staff, look at things from a lot of different angles, a lot of different ways, and what we came up with was the, what we're gonna talk about tonight, what we're gonna talk about here is concept. There's some details that we're looking at that are just more of what's possible based upon the need that we identified. All the answers aren't here, but some potential solutions are. And I do want to thank, take special time to thank your staff throughout the courthouse and the jail, they're excellent help to make a difference. We've got really good information. Anytime we ask anything, they were Johnny on the spot to jump up and give us whatever we need. What you have in your hands is a handout of all the slides that we're gonna go through. I understand we're on a limited time, a lot of slides, a lot of information, we're on move, as quickly as we possibly can. If you've got something you want to talk about, stop us, we're, we're here as long as you need us to be. But, given that, we're gonna just jump around here and do what we want. So, I want to ask Mike, if I'm up, so we're gonna start, we're gonna go with the courthouse first, then we're gonna talk about the jail, and then we're gonna wrap it all up, and we can go through all this.
I don't have a change, yeah?
Down this floor. Those love, we get going.
All right. A. O. Shear designed this courthouse, and the construction was completed in eighteen ninety-three, eighteen ninety-four. A. O. Shear was the same architect who completed the Indiana State House. You have one of the greatest gyms of a courthouse anywhere in the state of Indiana. Our goal today, and in past meetings, is to talk about some of the needs the courthouse has, you've done a great job taking care of the building, but there's a lot of needs here. We're gonna focus on things like safety, we're gonna focus on things like security, focus on your ability to store county records, your ability to open space in the courthouse to make it easier to move around, ADA accessibility, elevators, and additional storage space in the top floor of the building. As I mentioned, the courthouse is on the National Register of Historic Places. Here's some other comments that were made by the Indiana Courthouse Preservation Commission. We worked with them when we first approached the executive in the courthouse to talk about doing the study. The commission had numerous findings on the importance of saving historic courthouses and enhancing those, your treasurer, it is here, it's over a hundred eighteen years, oh, years old, in any rate, it's like a hundred eighteen years old. Are there any members of your local historical society here in the audience? Great. You're the key to our getting twenty-five hundred dollars from Indiana Landmarks Association a grant to help continue the study and help pay for some of this. We want to emphasize the importance of taking care of many of the historic items that are in the courthouse, and obviously there's a great list of things you've done. As we go through, I'll talk a little bit about ADA accessibility, the danger of a ramp that is two-speed, and the driveway that is two-speed for people in wheelchairs to really get access to the south door, which is your main entrance. This points out where it is, since the parking lots of the south, the courthouse was originally designed over a hundred years ago with the main entrance up north, but the south is the main entrance and needs a lot of help. Security is an issue, and it's, you've taken some steps, I've seen on your website, to say that the south entrance is the primary entrance of the open, only during limited hours, and so that your doors can be secure. The main entrance of the courthouse is not really something that we feel proud about, with the lawn care equipment and other storage boxes that are here, it's, part of this is just taking care of a wonderful place to be and work, this is, is a bad first impression. You've had leak issues that have gone on for years in the courthouse that we've talked about on different occasions, that should be taken care of as part of whatever work is done. It shows some of the damage and the pain inside. The current elevator that you have in the building meets no ADA safety codes, other than being a very small elevator, that somebody said once a wheelchair managed to get inside of it, but it doesn't meet any of those requirements. This is your key to moving records and people around in the building that don't have the ability to climb stairs after stairs after stairs. This crowded storage room on, in the law library, it's called the law library, it's got so many records in this room, that it's loaded over two-hundred and fifty pounds a square foot on the floor load. This is in danger of structural stress and collapse. We have an answer in designing a new storage room on that, in the attic level on the fifth floor, that was designed originally by the original architect to be an additional floor in the building and adding strength to that floor. Taking those records out of spaces like this opens up building space for other offices and other uses. Above this room, there's an open space that was never completed, that is room for another floor. Here's a historic jewel that's in the circuit court, courtroom, and is completely hidden by a ceiling. This is a wonderful focus for the dollars that Indiana Landmarks has to offer, and other possible grants that they might recommend, and with your help, we can talk to them about that. There's more pictures. There's the state seal that's painted, covers the ceiling, and these rods are hooked up through the ceiling to hold the suspended ceiling in place with a ductwork at, obviously it costs some dollars, but the ductwork can be moved to the side of the courtroom and cool the room, and the original ceiling be restored and not hurt the space in the building. There's some other poorly used office space, when you got, had new air conditioning and heating systems put in, it kind of crowded the ceiling area, and were just kind of thrown in. These are some of the other office spaces that were, they need help, and they can be organized, a new furniture, or just reorganizing the furnitures here, storing some of the things in a central storage area that don't need to be right in the immediate office area. Office areas can help make care of a number of issues. They, this is a meeting room on the ground floor, can be improved easily with lighting, color, moving a column, and making that space a very inviting space.
Thanks a lot, Monique.
Without costing a lot of money.
That didn't help me at all.
This is where the north entrance, original entrance to the building was placed. These are the doors that were on that north entrance to the building, very much like the doors on the state house. This is the room we're in, it's a beautiful room, you have a lot of audiovisual equipment that can be arranged and organized very easily. Some of the open public lobby spaces with exposed wiring and other things that be improved. A lot of these are just different pieces of the building that can be improved throughout the course of whatever construction happens to take care of some of the big issues. And here's where we're gonna get into that. In the center of this plan, this is the plan of the first floor of the building, or the meeting room is at the bottom of the picture, the old elevator, which is at the center of this room. Here's for that old elevator, and here's all the lawn equipment that's located, that's gonna be gone, because you can put a new elevator in the building and improve the space for somebody, the health department needs to expand space, the Veterans Administration office could locate here, just to make it easier on older veteran, I'm a veteran, sometimes I don't move as well as I used to. The, when the building was designed, more men worked in the building than women. Hence, the men's restroom is really big, the women's room is really small. We recommend you switch those, and with some changes in the restroom, make it appropriate because there are more women that work in the building now, not now. This is a pattern that's gone on for a number of years.
So, the smile, is that Jesus?
Only because you know it's a-
I saw your smile.
You know, you walk there, you turn around.
I saw your smile, is that true?
It is true, it is true.
Okay. At the second floor level, that's where we end the location of our two exit stairways. Most buildings, particularly buildings without sprinkler systems or other fire protection systems, have at least two stairways that go all the way up to the building. This is the beginning of the second stair that we're gonna recommend you put in, in addition to the elevator, and in addition to reposition space. Now, we don't necessarily have to use the space in this room for office space, these plans are just indicated as possible study plans, please don't paint them too literally. We're trying to keep many of the spaces where they are, but a lot of them are very crowded, and may have to be moved around, and if we can move ahead with some of your planning, we had to do many more discussions about where correctly to locate some of the offices. All right, this is the third floor level, this is where the circuit court is, where the ceiling should be corrected. There should be restrooms on this level to give access to people using a public space as part of ADA access, the larger elevator, this is the room that we've now opened up, we've taken the records out of there, moved them up to the attic. Here's the second stairway that comes out of the building. I think someone asked in one of early meetings about putting a spiral stair, it's possible, takes a little more space, if that's something you want for- takes a little more space, if that's something you want to pursue, take them, yeah. The, this is the beginning of the staircase that is about the size of a spiral staircase. This is the fourth floor level, this is a new floor area that's actually built into that room, that was a records room and now provides space for additional office space, possibly a future superior courtroom. This is the fifth floor level where it's the attic, but it's very tall space. This line represents where the ceiling comes to a point where, you know, gets a little too low, but all of this could be compact, simple record storage, the elevator that comes up through the whole building, the additional stair, the first stair, and access to all the heating and cooling mechanical equipment around the perimeter of this. This is one of the most valuable things that you do to the building, not add to the building, not take away from the exterior of the building, but use what you have here as a structural envelope to make a really nice space usage.
Where on that is the stairway going up to the south of the clock?
Here's the clock carrying here and we did look at the possibility of putting that second stair there. It did, what we ended up having to do is carve that walkway over to the stairs through different departments like the auditors area and some of the other rooms that ate up more square foot. So, I mean, it doesn't mean that this has to be here, we could certainly look at a couple other areas. This lines up nicely with where it is down below. This was a summary, record storage severely inadequate, the fifth floor, solutions, what we recommend, lack of a second fire stair to meet fire code can be solved and should be. Inadequate restrooms on a first floor in the courtroom floor, inadequately sized elevator that needs to be an elevator to go the all the way to the full height of the building is capable of carrying masses of those permanent records you have to feed forever. This is not a problem just here, it's a problem in every county. We design courthouses and courthouse renovations in many counties throughout the state plus federal courthouses as well, and they all have the same problem. Go slab at the fourth floor level above the southwest storage room. Your need to restore the courtroom historic ceiling and the need to improve security and appearance at the south entrance are the major issues that we focus on here. Many of the other historic improvements and aesthetic improvements to the courthouse can be done at very moderate cost provided some of these major issues are tackled.
Did we get all that? We went through that pretty quick. Before we move on and talk about the jail, is there any questions about what we kind of, we, we, the, the study that the state did, the state courthouse advisory committee was, was pretty key in some of the things that we probably looked at and talked about here because what they, what they did was the general assembly set up the advisory committee to do primarily what, two, a couple things. First of all was to assess Indiana courthouses, find out where they're at, what they need, what their challenges were as far as how to get things done and how to pay for those things because every county that's in this situation and, and they're all, these built, these buildings were built eighty to a hundred and some odd years ago and they're still functioning. It's amazing how well they still function after all these years, but it were a point where things begin to change a lot. So they wanted to see what kind of condition things were in, what kind of improvements would be made and see if there was some way to come up with some kind of funding to, to do that. Well, the two or three things that they, that they came out of this and the key recommendations to the general assembly was they really encouraged counties to do more in-depth planning and they really encouraged that the, that the effort was made to look at long-term plan. That we're already doing that. So the other thing they wanted to look at was would there be the potential of some type of funding? They were even recommending the state and Indiana law general assembly that they begin to look at funding mechanisms and possibly grants in the future to, to jump on somebody's challenge. I will tell you, at this point in time, there is no grants and not new foreseeable future will be any grants. The good news is they looked at it, they, they saw one thing that was really key, they said, you know, these, these old buildings were built at the time they were, they were built to encourage economic development in the community. Well, you notice in ninety-two counties, there's a courthouse in the middle of every town square in ninety-two counties and the town where they built these things, they developed, the county developed around it. It worked. And the point they make, which I have to do this through, the maintenance and then the, the renovations and then the preservation of these, it still works in economic development. If people come in, look at, they want to see what you've done to, to your own facility. So, but they did a really good study, if there's a book on it that is worth the time if, if you're interested, it's available through, probably DNR I think.
Department of Natural Resources.
So anyway, that, that's kind of, I didn't want to gloss over the, the work that they've done because they put a lot of money and a lot of effort into it and a lot of input was, was offered. So, we'll talk about the needs and some of the potential solutions to the jail. If there's no questions or you want to spend some time on something else that we just kind of flew over. By the way, I do have a couple of these handouts, be aware, one's them. You got one?
I do have one little question.
Little question.
Why would we, why would someone consider a spiral stairway into the fire exit?
Oh, I think the question was, sorry.
Would this be considered as a fire, why would they want to consider a, even look at a spiral stairway?
Oh, I think it was just a question someone asked, but the, there's a code requirement that the width of the tread can be no smaller than eleven inches for a fire stairway and you can't design a spiral stairway if you want to do a monumental type stairway. To go high floor to floor in this building, some of the stairways had to spread out so we could go up, up, up like this and have space and open in the middle. Probably a rectangular stair is going to be more efficient use of space, so that's what we showed up in the plan. The planning process have taken quite a while because we've talked to a lot of people so far, we've talked to three times, as many people have done before planning approved.
The other point that, that I think was worth not really passing on too quickly, I think this is the right sign, this is the third floor, fourth floor. Down in the lower left-hand corner all the way, yeah, that room in there now is just flooded with records. As Mike said, it's, it's in danger of overloading the floor.
It's actually third floor level. This floor doesn't even have a floor type place right now.
Well, that's right.
This is twelve hundred square feet of new space that would be created just by putting a floor.
And, and between the third and the fourth floor, that is actually two stories tall. So the idea of creating more space for more flexibility is to build that floor in and create that space in the lower floor, moving those records down where, where we're left-hand corner, up into the upper space. So records, moving records around this building and getting a good storage solution for records is really a key point. And the elevator and stairwell is kind of conjoined to that as part of all of the, the happening that was taking on. So with that.
The only problem with moving the court records to the floor is that the court and the clerk needs constant access.
Yeah, we can't move everything. We understand you don't have immediate record access for records if you keep it and even some records, you need some, you need to go to where you're working, but we realize there are a lot of records that get stored forever and that need to have a place, but also need to have a place, we can find it. The records room up there now, there are a lot of places like that. I know I'm not the smallest person, but it's really hard to find things in there.
Now, one thing that would also be needed is because people like the genealogy research, they like to spend some time in that record room, they can't be un-supervised.
No, I would recommend that, that floor, I mean, we would, first, you'd have an excellent shelving system there and very efficient organization of records. I've signed the Indiana Historical Society and the archive records storage there and it would be the same kind of system they would use and the, you would need to have someone go with whoever wants to take records out of there, records out, you know, to make certain, taken out, signed out, you know, I promote you to have a library and put back.
So going to that fifth floor, would that be a key entry in the elevator, the public wouldn't it?
You could have it that way or you could have one person up there all the time to take care of and manage it.
I don't know if this is even a reasonable idea and this is, I don't even know if this will happen in the near future, but maybe the Historical Society can bring some of their records back and we can utilize their volunteer service out of that floor. I don't know if it's going to be climate control.
Very common, there are windows up there and it's a nice, there are places up there that are very.
And what we're talking about here in this grid here is actually, in effect, building and building itself on that floor, the climate control.
All of this north side is, you've got windows up in, that side is a building which are bringing some very nice light, very nice environment and for someone who wants to manage that area.
I know that when people come in, a lot of times, they, what they can't find in our records room going back to the early nineteen hundreds, thirty-four, we have to send them either over to the library or to the Historical Society and maybe there's a way to create something more central.
Certainly, with enough space there to create, they can't. The other thing with the records you want to keep in mind is we understand there's court records that can't be accessed and with modern filing systems, those can be locked off, you've got to get a key to get access to, access codes, all kinds of things that really want to allow access to those people to have access to.
Typically, a central records area like this is going to have a number of different departments and, and whether you have a locker, you just have a designated for prosecutor or clerk or auditor and so forth and so that this area here is where that law library records area is by size, you can see how big of this space is and with an efficient filing system, how the capability of providing plenty of space for now and then. I think your idea of bringing someone else in.
Anything else?
Can I ask a question?
What?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure, yeah.
That fifth floor, how much does it cost?
Oh, it's probably written on there, but I don't remember it all, just about.
About forty, about forty-two hundred square feet, that's who it stands right now.
How much is that fifth floor going to cost the county?
What's that?
How much is that fifth floor going to cost the county?
We'll talk about that later.
That's the next, that's the next chapter here. There's part of the fifth floor that is structurally designed already to carry a heavy load. We'll have to do some more analysis on the load. Our cost estimate to follow up with Mr. Friend and Mr. Nichols' comments earlier is adequate to cover surprises that has got to tend to see here, but how much it costs, we're, we're going to cover that.
Okay, and you had talked about the third floor and the fourth floor, the load that that storage records are stressing out the building. I just want, I just wondered because the Historical Society, you know, if, if it's cost-effective for them to build an addition onto our, we have the, we have the grounds, we have it already maintained, we have somebody there, they have limited access, the public does, to these records, so they are right in front of me when they access these records. So everything is already there, it just makes more sense to myself and to probably others, why not just add on the storage facility there that we need and house those records where the other records are being housed?
You can add on to your.
The stor-, excuse me, the Historical Society.
Add on to the Historical Society.
We have the ground.
First thing, I think there's a lot of records that need to stay inside this building.
I'm not saying all the records, I'm just saying what we have now is from nineteen hundred back to eighteen forty-four on the probate records that's already housed, as well as several of those books, but I don't know why it doesn't make sense if it's going to cost only, you know, a hundred thousand dollars to move these over to our facility and build us a storage facility there where everything is already being maintained, you know, the upkeep, everything is, is happening there, as well as somebody that's already there to maintain those records, several people are, versus the fifth floor with all the extra.
There's a lot of other benefits that floor brings. I mean, certainly record storage is one thing, it also brings a lot of space if even offices or some of the different apartments needed to expand. Let's say a superior court comes into the courthouse and we need to take some of the other offices that support the courts and put them somewhere, give space for it to happen. It was designed initially, originally, a hundred years ago to really be a part of the courthouse as just another floor and we need to bring an elevator into the courthouse that is adequate to move things up and down, not just people, furniture, records, and that would, extending that up is good. I think it's just a good investment long-term, you know. Do we need it today? Maybe not, but do we need it ten years from now? Absolutely. Do we need it twenty years from now? I think it's very important.
And also what we're talking about is a more in-depth look at final solutions.
I can't see him.
And if a county would look at, decide to do something about that, we, we need to sit down and see if that's plausible reason.
You offer a lot of other concerns.
I can't see him.
You can see him, all right, well, get out of the way. Oh, I see.
All right. Excuse us, my name is Sanjay Patel with Artier and Illus Corporation. I'm a head of department of, of the buildings, but years and years and that, again, you've seen Doug Potter from our office here, you've seen Mark by now, another one of the architects who can handle almost any kind of correction facility that comes our way. I'll be talking about jail deficiencies, the processes that we go through in the studies like this to determine what, what needs are and what solutions might be. Broadly broken out, we're going to talk about demographics of the county, the building itself, its deficiencies, base of codes, some of the advantages that we might see in building a new facility, staffing up the facility, which again, you know, is a long-term element of a, of a project of this type, which you can wait for a few years and we have to look at that very seriously. Side options, we will look at that last, just like we'll date that over and discuss some of the options we looked at during the study and what some of the advantages and Fipton County, you know, we went back thirty years, forty years and pretty much from what you can see, the population is pretty steady. There's been a slight decline due to migration out of the county, but for the most part, right around that sixteen, sixteen and a half thousand mark, that's where the competition is state and objections from IU and other sources have indicated that the county will still remain on the sixty thousand population mark for the next thirty years. This is the aggregate population of the jail. What you see here, this blue line right there, that is the current capacity of the jail in twenty-seven years. That was added on to the eighties and back then it probably seemed sufficient, maybe a little over capacity at that point, but that's the capacity right now of the jail. The other lines that you see are the actual population of the jail in the last two years. You can see it fluctuates a little bit down here in eleven, but for the most part it's constantly over that point seven, inmate population gap. The blue line here, that, that curve line is your aggregate population, we use to determine jail sizes and project what jails you need for the next twenty years. One thing about operating the jail, there's, there's this thing called classification and efficiency. With the different kinds of inmates, you have males, females, members of different gangs, you know, different types of offenders, housing all of them together in cells and dorms becomes a challenge for the sheriff where he's trying to break them up so there's no adverse interactions between people of different backgrounds, sex, and even. so there's no adverse interactions between people of different backgrounds, of sex, and even people who committed different crimes, or some who are awaiting judgment or are wanting sentence. So that fifteen percent, we feel, is a required classification and efficiency factor that we have to factor into the jail to allow the sheriff to properly run this jail with minimal incidences that affect how you run the jail. So this line here that you see on top, the purple line, is what we call the eighty-five percent inefficiency factor. And it's consistently been much higher than the average daily population, currently, right now, showing around sixty. In fact, yesterday, when we checked the population of the jail, we had around forty-five inmates, and that's almost twice of what the current population of the jail was, you know, of current capacity is. So I don't know how he knows it, but, you know, he's putting a lot more inmates in there, and he seems to be running it as best as he can. So sheriff, that's up to you. Existing building. My cat though, an easier job of explaining the deficiency that the court has, because anyone here probably walks through this building five times a day or maybe more. By show of hands, I don't know how many people have walked through the jail. So, you know, everything I'm going to show you from here on out is might be new, it might have been set before, but until you actually experience the jail from the inside, it's kind of hard to imagine. And sheriff, you might be wasn't happy to show anyone around who wants to come by at any time in the future, and invite them on. I'm going to talk about deficiencies based on actual codes that are used today to design jails. One of the codes that we talk about is going to be the American Corrections Association standards. That is standards that have by the ward that dictates how jails should be run, operated, built, designed, all of these things. It talks about this, and it's required that jails try and conform to these standards. Number one, of course, we saw the previous slide, inmate capacity already exceeds what the jails designed for. We also talked about, the existing jail when it was built like thirty years ago, it probably met the standards of what, what was applicable at that time, but as codes change and needs change, requirements change, as, as of right now, the jail definitely does not meet the requirements of the standards. There are numerous space requirements that the standards set out for inmates. The amount of space they need in their cells, in day rooms, restrooms, number of shower fixtures they need, toilet facilities they need, recreation spaces. And the next couple of slides will show, you know, some of those deficiencies that we found in the jail. Each inmate needs a minimum of thirty-five square feet of unencumbered space in his cell. So, you know, that includes bunks, and tables, and chairs, and anything of that sort. And you put two inmates in a four, you need seventy. Right now, I think most of the cells have barely fifty square feet per inmate. Multiple lock cells of two to six, I think there are a few of those in jail right now, they need a minimum of twenty-five square feet of unencumbered space. We don't have that. Dayroom spaces for inmates outside their sleeping areas, that again, needs another thirty-five square feet of inmate, thirty-five square feet per inmate. And I think in most cases, they're not up to that standard. There's also insufficient seating and lighting surfaces in the dayroom spaces. Some of them have tables, some of them don't, and that's where they used to, to, to sit in right now. The new standards, and this wasn't applicable back when the jail was built. Lighting levels in dayroom cells are very important now. I mean, they've set standards for the number of nat-, the amount of natural light that needs to be available to inmates who have more than ten hours a day in their cells. Three square feet of natural light needs to be available to everyone, all the inmates, if they're housing themselves for more than ten hours a day. At the present, there is no natural light in any of the cells, and in the dayrooms either, I believe. So that's something that doesn't meet the requirements of the code. Artificial lighting, you know, this photograph here, this is a light picture that hasn't been operational for years. There have been attempts to try and fix it, and it's not been successful. So even artificial lighting is not up to the standards that are recommended by the codes. Ventilation systems in jails, in housing areas, in sleeping areas, again, you know, by code, we, we. We need at least fifteen cubic feet of air circulated around in the sleeping areas. And you notice this picture here, this is a pretty ingenious method of letting air circulate through the housing area. Without this phone book being stuck in the door and keeping things open, I think the sleeping areas get extremely uncomfortable. And so that is, is what the sheriff or somebody came up with to keep air circulated through the sublocks. And the biggest issue with that, it's a safety factor. You open the doors for inmates and staff to interact, and it's asking for trouble there.
What did you say it was?
It's a phone book.
A phone book?
It's stuck at the top of the door.
The door, keep it open.
The lights are wired. That's the phone book, and the closer there, that's the door.
Yes.
No, you turn those off, and you turn those off, and I'm not going to be able to help.
That's the middle, what that is, the middle bay, those are two cells, each in the one metal. If you don't have that door open, there is no air circulation whatsoever in that metal.
So that's brought to open a thing like this for, all the time, just to get air circulating inside the sleeping areas, so. Photograph the bottom, that's janitor's closet inside. Again, you know, by code requirements, we do make support spaces like that. And, and the issue that we have with this is that it keeps chemicals, cleaning utensils, all that, all the kind of stuff, freely accessible to inmates, which could become weapons if they're out of cannonball. So that's something that, you know, definitely not up to par. Control in jail, that's, jail is by control. The central control, staff, how you control the staff, how you run it, it, it's all basically controlled. The control room that you see on the photograph at the top left, size-wise, adequate. It has two systems at one point, one here, you can see the background here, and, and the current one, which is being used right now. The technology has changed so much that the parts and pieces for this system are no longer available. So what's happened is they scabbed that system to make this keep running. And so now, there is no backup for this one position in the control room. Eventually, we're going to run out of parts here, and that's not going to work. So one of the other requirements of the code is also that there should be a clear ability to release inmates in case of emergency. Right hand to release inmates in that, in that condition, if there's somebody to walk out of the central control, walk over to this panel at each sublock, and throw this lever mechanically. In an emergency situation, you don't want anyone out of that room trying to let them out, you want everything to be controlled from that central control. And so that becomes a, a security hazard, it becomes a problem for somebody to try to get the inmates out in case of emergency. Photograph there, that's our cable, and some electrical wiring in, in each sublock, and that's typically each sublock. Not something you want inmates to have access to that easily, but it's, it's, it's there, and something in place. Circulation inside a jail, critical to keep inmates, visitors, staff, you want to keep them all separate as much as possible, keep that interaction to where you can control the situation and not allow unintentional interaction to happen. This photograph here is actually the passageway for visitation to take place. It's also where you might see inmates sitting in a, in a chair. That is a booking counter, again, interaction between inmates, public, staff, again, very unsafe. That's the kind of cameras that we have in most jails right now. All outdated, definitely is outdated. Some of the, one of the things that we do not see in this, in this facility is the ability to have isolation cells for medical conditions, or inmates with serious medical illnesses, or extreme, extremely violent types of inmates. Definitely some, something like that needs to be put in the jail. Beautiful offenders, I, I think we don't house them, I, I think that was.
We cannot house anybody under eighteen, we either have to take them to Hamilton County or Howard County.
Okay. If, if there are underage inmates, and that they need to be segregated, and that's, that's really, really don't happen in this facility. There's an adequate program space for staff and inmates. Photograph up here is a law library and an interview room. That's, that's the extent of the law library, so.
Sanjay, if you don't mind back there, one for you, explain that. We, we talked about program spaces, you guys aren't aware of it, we're talking about things that are geared towards circumvent the recidivism, people coming back over, over again. That includes things like GED.
Drug programs.
Drug programs, behavior programs, religious activities, all kinds of things that are geared towards giving these guys and gals a chance when they come out to make a positive change in their life. And the, the research and the experience over the last several years is showing that, that, that those kind of programs help. And so the importance of having that is not just a, a recommendation by the American Corrections Association, it's, it's a real live benefit to help what's, what's going on. And, and yet it does work, and right now, you've got no place to do.
We do a drug program, and we do it in the garage. And it's like, if somebody brings somebody in, they have to park outside to get in the building.
And, and most, a lot of this programming is to be offered by the school corporation, and it's a religious organization. A lot of it is at no cost to the county at all, as long as you have the space. People are out there ready, willing, and able to help if you got space for them to do that, so. Sorry about that, just lost my eye.
We got food preparation in Port Department Jail, that's our kitchen. The sheriff probably cooks about sixty thousand meals a year, and that wouldn't be close. And, and at one point, when jail had twenty-seven inmates, it might have been sufficient, but, but the population being plus forty-five in more times, and the prison being, I don't know if it works, but that's definitely not convenient. It's not efficient to be feeding that many inmates out of that corner of the kitchen. Program services, again, despite your elaboration on that, there's definitely a lack of space, and also training for inmate or for staff who would need, who would need kind of program. That, there is the booking system, not very efficient, not, not tractable really, that, that, that kind of makes you come up to the point you just said.
Sunday, that's, that's where the visitors, they come in and sign in before they go back to sit with their person that's on the desk. That's all we have to have them sign in, and anybody can walk through there. So there's no screen to tell who's really coming in our jail. We ask for an ID, now whether the jailers, all make somebody show if they don't know, that's all we have tonight.
So you don't, like, see in, or just never make sure they have a weapon?
We're supposed to, I mean, my, our people are supposed to look at picture ID, but they have to sign their name there in.
So if we don't do anything like at the courthouse, and if something, you walk into Hamilton County, you don't get beyond the line unless you're.
Right. Well, see, they have the door and the bottom picture on the left, which is locked. But while we take them back there, they may look at the ID, they can sign some other names, so if something were to happen, then all they're going to remember is this is not the person it was that they said they were, you know, so they're not going to have a name. So that's, that's what that is, and it sits right up the open.
Also, microtechnology allows for video visitation, where the inmates don't have to leave the confinement or dayroom space, so we don't, so we totally lose the capability of, of direct interaction. And also, when they're talking over the phones and stuff, there's capability of taping anything, recording anything, we can send them there if the sheriff and his staff, so things, something they want to hear. So there's a, technology offers a lot of security in that issue, and a lot of, a lot of backup and follow-up capabilities that just isn't there now, not only because of space, but also because of technology.
One of the things that the technology also allows us to do, is the station also making a revenue stream.
Right.
It allows for visitation across the internet, you know, generating some income for the sheriffs, and plus at that point. It also allows for video arrangement across the courthouse, sometimes it's like, it's, it's, the ability is there to use to come to each other's advantage. That lobby there, lacking facilities for visitors, there are no storage spaces, that kind of stuff, so it definitely needs an upgrade there. Outdoor recreation, you know, abandoned, or, one of those requirements, again, by the ACA standards, a human house at least for ten hours needs at least an hour of recreation time. That outdoor recreation looking neighboring houses is still only recreation space. And for safety and a contraband issue, that definitely becomes a problem. It's so easy to project contraband into that space, and it makes sheriff have to spend extra effort and time searching the space because he doesn't have inmates in there. So it's not also the best view that neighbors who have into the jail, the recreation area, I'm not sure anyone wants to see that on a daily basis. So again, that, that's another area that could definitely see some, including the law library that we talked about, that was a little bit shared. That was our existing facility, like I said, again, you know, walk over there, see how bad it is, it, it's quite a sight. What can we do with a facility, what should it be today, what, what's changed over the last thirty years, what has technology done, what, what designs have improved? That's some of the things that we'll see over the next few slides, to see what's happening out there that we want to emulate and try and bring to this facility. One of the things that we've started doing, probably about ten years ago, we did our first elevated control room jail. Typically, before that, control rooms were centrally located in the housing pod at the same level, maybe a couple of feet higher than the floor of the housing pods. What we've done is taken it up a whole floor, so now from central control, they're looking down into spaces. It, it, it keeps central control more secure, gives them better visibility, and, and also reduces some of the costs associated with putting a control room down below that level because you have some, two layers of secure glass and circulation, which takes up space. We've also started doing a double envelope sign where the back sides of the cells are now a secure perimeter, but the exterior face of the building is just, could be anything. It could be a pre-indian building, it could be a brick facade that matches the surrounding buildings where the facilities being put. It also allows for maintenance to be out of the secure areas. No longer do maintenance people have to go into secure areas with their tools, lock everyone down, do their maintenance team out. No longer do maintenance people have to go into secure areas with their tools, lock everyone down, do their maintenance team out after counting their tools to make sure they're not everywhere. All maintenance is can now be done in that trace that is behind the cells without any disruption to the operation of the jail. Some of the things we started doing new are showers and froths, new froths that reduce maintenance, which is always an issue for any kind of facility. Elevated control rooms, you can see that photograph on the top right, that's a typical view of a dayroom from an elevated control room. You can see right into all the cells, you can see the dayroom spaces. And again, as facilities stand on the floor, very little chance for anyone getting into that surface. Also from the elevated control room, you look into different spaces. You can look into booking, you can look into visitation, recreation spaces, makes everything very easy to operate from that single spot. Again, more photographs off an elevated control room to show how, you know, how it helps to run into jail more efficiently. One of the things we started doing, we were the first company to put prefabricated modular steel cells in Indiana. And you can see that photograph on the top right, it's Lake County Jail in Northern Indiana, they're, it's a double stack of cells going in. All these cells come prefabricated with everything that you want inside, from lighting fixtures to plumbing fixtures, finishes, everything comes pre-ordered, stacked up, construction goes faster, it's much more efficient. Cell layouts, we've started putting showers in every cell, eliminates problems with having sheriffs out in the dayroom, with water being tracked across the, across the floor, no fights of who gets to use the shower. Saves a lot of maintenance, again, to keep showers inside the cells. Stability windows, we started putting that in every cell, not as secure a window, again, it's a safety door to the cell there. Some, some benefits of a new facility, some of some of the technologies that we started using and definitely that helps our facilities be, you know, have less maintenance costs and less maintenance time by the sheriff's staff. We're talking about staffing now, any questions so far on some of the facilities we've seen? Nope, I must have said, anything you need to say? We had some conversations with staff, sheriff amongst the team too. Based on our average of the population and the projections that we saw, we're projecting a facility of about a hundred beds would be ideal at this point for this county. It's based on a lot of factors. Looked at comparable counties with similar populations, similar jail statistics, where your average population was now. Throwing in the efficiency factors of fifteen percent. Hundred was, it was a good target number to hit, which would allow also for some expansion, so you didn't move in or fall in with thinking about expansion five days down the road. Based on our program and our experience, we think our facility of a hundred beds would be about thirty-eight thousand square feet with all these different elements, you know, we have plumbing spaces, we have administration for the sheriff, for detectives, heaven's storage, and taking booking, housing for the inmates, and then group preparation, and this, like, this areas like recreation and things like that. So yeah, total thirty-eight thousand square feet is where we're taking it today. Let's talk about staffing on the first slide. Looked at two scenarios. What if we added to the existing jail, what would it do to staffing? Based on current configuration of that jail and adding a pod, we'd have to add eight new staff to run that facility. And that's eight staff for the rest of the life of that facility, that's a considerable cost. A new facility, on the other hand, we could run with the present staff we have. Definitely feels a big savings and definitely something worth looking at.
When you say staff, what are you talking, jailers?
Yeah.
And we currently have, how many?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
And, and all this comes from the efficiencies of a new design you started adding on to existing buildings, you start losing some of those efficiencies of staffing, and that's where the increase shows up. We're gonna look at some site options, Blake, you know, both of these?
When we started all this week, I looked at newer sites, and I mean new ones. And what we tried to do is come down to the point where we were looking at things that, that made some real sense and also were kind of a mixed bag of potential real life plausible solution. It isn't meant to be an all-inclusive potential of sites, but it does give you an idea of what it's gonna take and some, some of the challenges you might have on a particular given type, type of site. So first thing we obviously had to look at is existing jail. Here, right there is your existing building with the, can't see it very well, but the sheriff's, old historic sheriff's facility right up front. Down in this corner is the EMA building. In order to build on this block, in order to be able to build enough beds to meet the capacity that we're talking about, and again, I'll talk more quickly about that, was a hundred right number, well, we know that fifty's not because we're already there fifty. And then you want to make sure that you build large enough to be able to handle long term. So then we begin to classify inmates, then that begins to separate people and so... And when we're talking about classification, if each one of these little areas here is a division where in particular, where particular classifications can be, women, people waiting, court, post adjudication, all ki-, you know, the different types of classifications of things you're dealing with. So you got, you gotta be able to separate those types of people, and when you look at your existing facility and be able to hit that count, we can't get them all there. We've got to be able to go back into the original building and use some of those existing cells in order to make that count. Thus, that's why we have an increase in staffing, because you gotta watch two places now instead of just one. This, this here would represent a new intake, our new intake and booking area, and this is some space that's needed for the administration. And the building, if you've been through it, it, it's really clumsy as far as that way into administration and things like that works. But that gets to meet the need that we have projected, that's kind of what we, the challenge of that is you got a new dispatch building here, you've got some really nice homes, you've got some commercial here, then streets and that kind of thing. So the ability to expand in, in an event that you have to expand gets a bit, a little bit of a problem. So that's the existing site. Another place we looked at was, here's the courthouse, here's parking on by the courthouse, this is the library, and that's the city lot over here. One thing we talked so in-depth with the sheriff and even the city was the potential of cohabitating the city police and the sheriff's department. And the reason why is because they're out of space. They had, and, and not so much from the, from the city police standpoint as the fire, they're at a very close tipping point. They have, they have put on one more person, they're, they have, they've got to move their people out. So the potential of being able to use, have the city come in and, you know, build them space that they can lease off to you or whatever, is a real possibility, and there is a, an interest possibility of looking at that, we had talked about it. But anyway, this lot here, it's an out there parking lot, the challenge is with, there's, there's no, real no place to expand except for loose floor parking. You've got a very public building of all ages right across the, the way. You got a courthouse here, when Sanjay talks about building something out of a pre-engineered building, a very low-cost envelopes, that goes away here because you gotta begin to look at what's compatible with the store character of downtown area, particularly the courthouse and those kinds of things. So the cost begins to go up and the flexibility goes down. Then we looked at a site out, the fairgrounds here, this is the canyon over there, there's just a housing addition here. This is a very open green space, wide open pallet to be able to do all the kinds of future expansive capabilities here around the building. And we can even do some mounding and landscaping to isolate that. But it's next to the fairgrounds, and it's got good access, accessibility to the city utilities, there's good storm drainage up there. There's a lot of good things about this site, and it's one that you really want to begin to think about this type of site and decide, which you gotta decide whether or not your fairgrounds and some potential. We even looked at along the highway, which you have same conditions out there, that ends up being some pretty good potential economic development space that you're-
We've, we've done a number of projects, jails close to fairgrounds, we just know that that tends to be an argument that you may not, you may want to avoid.
You know, there, we always go for this, this same question, you know, it's hard to put a jail, and even if you to the point where you decide you gotta do something, it's, it's never in my backyard, is it? So sites always an issue, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of good about this, but there are some neighborhood issues there. Oh, and I'm gonna let-
What's the ID from about eight years ago?
We're looking from around five to seven acres. We'll jump ahead of this site here and I'll back up to that one before. The, this is out along Jefferson Street, coming down the curve in town, the, the drainage ditch is here. This, I think it's part of-
Old Pioneer.
Old Pioneer.
Pioneer. Old.
Old Pioneer. Talked to some of the people, we had a couple of public meetings, and, and several people came to, and we, and one of the gentlemen out, that came to meeting actually has possession of part of the ground. And he talked to us about the capabilities of being able to acquire more property there than, and there is more property there. But so the things good about this is, is it's, there's a building and plenty of parking, expansion capabilities if you want to do it, police, a lot of capabilities there, future expansions. This little hatchy line here has to do with flood.
All right. Buck Creek, that on the middle there, that, that double hatch blue portion there. The hatch portion there is called Floodway, that's potentially where you'll see flooding every time this city area. The blue hatch portion outside of that is called Flood Fringe. That is where a hundred-year flood might happen, if you get into that situation. A hundred-year flood is not something that happens every, every year, it's a one percent chance of happening every year. So you gotta look at it differently rather than a hundred-year flood. It could happen every year, but of course, actually you could see some flooding in that area. From a visibility standpoint, you can build in a flood fringe, you just have to go through the insurance and pay the extra fee for flood insurance, you gotta go to the state.
Right.
Being our, you, you just can't build in the floodway, which is that central portion around Buck Creek.
Right.
But the building, the parking can be in that area, the building itself just needs to be on the fringe itself.
So there's some challenges there that can crop up, so we'll do a little more investigation.
Is there any restriction to how close to the school jail you're going to go there?
No.
The only restriction on that is the window. Can't, can't go right across-
New, new jails are, are typically a pretty decent shell room, and it's very difficult to see anything move on. Where now you see people in this, in the back area, pretty much jails are confined and, and visibility is very limited. So they can be in, in places where in the past you may not want to, but they're still a jail.
And Danny, the, the rack, the rack is built in on the interior, the only it rolls open is the ceiling. That's how they get their fresh air and their light, and there's no, nobody can look in and see them or get into him in the building.
And even, even what he showed you, those cells with, with the interior perimeter, those, the windows in the cells and the windows in the building are offset, so you can't really see directly into, into those. So you, you can be about anywhere you want where the public walks.
I think at one point the city also enlarged that, the utility capability over that area.
Over here?
Yeah.
Did you say, did you did or did you?
We did, because plenty of it used to be there in order to run services over to them, and boards underneath twenty-eight.
Didn't know what you did about, as we talked to people that appear there. We talked about the recreation, right now he doesn't have any indoor recreation.
No.
And so the, the combination indoor-outdoor gives him both without building the space twice. Anyway, it's a possibility, and, and it's, you know, it's, it's on main, main corridor coming in town. Aesthetics and destructibility, you know, you may want, it's kind of a leader into the town, the city, so they want to be real sensitive about what, what kind of envelope you have on the outside, so. The last one we centered in on, which frankly we like the best, is out at the OFMC site on Dearborn Avenue Street. Here is the Buck Creek again, here's that same fringe that Sanjay was talking about. Solidly, the assets on the property are solidly outside of it. This site gives you the ability to build here, it gives you the ability to expand. You could, and, and someday in the future, you could do a standalone work release there. There's lots of opportunities on this site, and right now you've got a building that's partially demolished sitting there. And we have done some pretty preliminary, but one of our early concerns was environmental, but talking to the mayor, we believe that there are not environmental issues there, so. You get that, this site gets rid of a, an old ice wall. There is some residents here, I've been writing here, a lot of these neighbors are commercial. The residence you have here has a natural boundary, I call it natural railroad, and it's in the woods. It's a nice isolated site, it's close to downtown. When the sheriff puts a guy in a car to take him to the, to the courthouse, what, it doesn't make it everybody, it was one block and five. He's gotta, you gotta put him in the transporter. The video visitation, uh, video arrangement will help a lot of transport too as well. Anyway, so there's the kind of sites we looked at and the kind of potentials, and are the, is it all inclusive though? Once, once you begin to look at these things, there's other possibilities you come up to, that, that present themselves. You need to look at them, and as we look at them, that's the kind of criteria you need to look at as we analyze. So we talked about demographics, we talked about the, the efficiencies of the existing facility, and we talked about the, a real advantage of a new facility or new facilities on the old facility. We talked about staffing projections and the efficiency, efficiencies of new construction opposed to expansion, and we talked about the site. And from that, we kind of come down to think about the courthouse, and, and back to the question, what's all this cost? We looked at preliminary project cost of the courthouse, the jail, and then we're gonna let Jerry talk about funding capabilities and potential options as soon as I get through with this, so. Courthouse, given the concepts that we're looking at right now, we're looking at a construction cost of three to three and a half million, or project cost of three to three and a half million dollars, includes construction cost, furniture furnishings, professional fees. The lion's share of that is building the accessibility for the, for the fifth floor, the elevator, the new area, the new stairwell, meeting the codes and getting the accessibility in the building. The jail, we're looking at the existing site, six and a half to seven million dollars with the- With the challenge we talked about, construction costs, furniture, professional fees. A new site is maybe ten to eleven million dollars. However, these costs do not include property acquisition, any site clearing and environmental remediation if it's there. And whatever financing cost it includes to whatever finance option you put in place, which Gary's gonna talk about that as well. So before I ask Gary to talk about the money, is there any questions about all that?
I think if you want to know how much per square foot the fifth floor costs and it's like you remember the numbers on that, it's like a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars.
I'm thinking that's what it was.
But you can't build any new historic building that holds out kind of load structurally or pay less than that.
The, on that option B, you want to remember that on that sixth, even though it looks like it may be a fair amount of savings, you're talking about eight people every year from here till wherever. So that adds up pretty quick on an ongoing basis in your operation.
Well, not to mention the phasing issues, it's ready to try and build around existing facility.
Mike, was there anything in the estimate on the demolition of the old jail capitalized in this?
Well, we did not do anything with that because we did not know exactly what possibilities would be happening to that. Good question though. Whatever happens to the existing facility would be, would add some cost to that. Demolishing the back end of that, if that's what you do, is not huge dollars, but it is, there is dollars in there that need to be added to it. Or if you're gonna repurpose the building and use it for something else, then you need to look at that as well. And the consideration of what do you do with the old historic front end of it? Can they get down or do you keep it and repurpose it as well? And I think the mindset of the historic nature of your community would be to keep that and preserve it, even if you had to tear the rest of it down.
Skip that, that residence, the sheriff's residence was also designed by Al Scherer.
Yeah. It's on the, it's on the, when you walk in, when you walk into that, you see a lot of similarities between the courthouse. Anyway, so.
From the courthouse number, that does not include these, this water issue, does it? You have to take care of, it does include.
As far as the fixing outside and repairing the inside.
Right, we took care of the repairing the grains, the footings and walls themselves. There are a lot of things I glossed over when we went through a lot of our discussions, but a lot of finishing in the lobbies and some of the rooms where there's cardboard and transoms and rooms that were unfinished.
The exterior of the wall.
The outside.
The exterior. All the way up, one floor, two floor, four floors.
We had some ripping rehabilitation a little bit a few months ago. The contractors noticed all the water damage up there and strongly encouraged us to get that done.
We put, we put some money in there to address all that.
That's, that's really something that needs to be addressed very, very quickly.
Building has one primary enemy, that's water.
And it's a serious problem because the stone is so porous on the building. And we had a period of time in the summer when it dried out enough that we could probably look at some different types of treatment of the walls. But I think those things are rare. We would need to bring in probably a waterproofing specialist we work with to help us analyze. Historically, we're not supposed to put waterproofing on that stone, but if we don't do something to it, to secure it, we may not have as stones of water. Because it'll start cracking, the water gets in, it freezes, falls off, there's layers of stone that have sheared off the face all the way down. I've been aware of it all along and it's just not been a priority of people we talked about yet.
I have the means to fix it. So, yeah.
It has been talked about.
Well, we talked about it, I guess.
And we've had several different architects come and everyone has a different reason of what's wrong. And everyone has a different solution. And all of them had up to hundreds of thousands of dollars and no one can pinpoint or guarantee that's important.
That's why I think.
I was a commissioner for a while, we had several presentation.
I'm not gonna say I know the answer, but I do know where to get some of the answers. And that goes beyond, you know, something that is just a general study. But to do the repairs, I do know well enough that we have to analyze several different courses of the back. Worst would be to take the stone off and rebuild. You know, that would be real expensive if there's a way to secure the surface of the stone or to make the stone resist that water penetration. That's not ideal solution, but it involves looking at things to be put in, surface injected into service system without destroying the structure.
Is it a cheap fix?
I have a question. Has, there's a big question for the commissioner. Has there been obvious wet walls or is it just a feeling that has been there for many, many years or have you actually seen?
You saw some pictures.
Wet, we saw, you know, this, the whole level, it's, it's so big. And then the wall was.
Yeah, part of that started with water coming through the roof gutters and getting the, a lot of the drain pipes go down inside the wall, exterior of the building. When you don't have insulation around drain pipes that go in the walls, pipes start to break from the freezing during the winter time. Water that gets in the wall starts to freeze and expand and that's not on the wall, it had drains, it's coming to the piping system. Now I know there's sort of repairs within that layer, you mentioned repairs within that, I've seen the flights myself, up in the attic that have been repaired. We don't know exactly what goes down in the walls, particularly what's in the footings because we think there's problems down there too. We'd have to actually excavate, we'd have to take cameras down in there. I know there's some camera work. But those are the kinds of additional explorations that are done during a more intense design phase of the part of the project. The best way to do is to dry the walls out, make certain there's no water that gets in that stone at all, the outside or the inside. Make certain the drains that go down through the building go inside the building or the temperature stays above freezing. And then come out of the building down low enough to get into your storm sewer system that again doesn't freeze the line and causes a backup in the walls. And that's some plumbing, you know, that is somebody working at those various conditions. I don't know what other suggestions you can give to, it's not just a one answer solution. It's a combination of drains and repairing the stone, drying the stone out.
And the fact that that's been happening for a long time means there's water resonance in that, in those walls need to have an opportunity to.
But they're drying the stone out, we gotta get the water out.
Right.
And the water that comes into the wall is coming through the drainage system, but it's also coming soaking from the outside. So to dry the stones out is a major effort. There, I don't know what the insulation is, it's in some of your walls, I just think the building was built over a hundred years ago. People did put insulation in walls. So you have viewpoints that happen on the inside faces of the walls that cause the paint to blister and things like that. And that's another cause of some of the water problems. Do these sound like the way your discussions from your other view?
And I think it's unsealed the floor outside in the past.
It actually be a problem if it wasn't sealed correctly because it traps water in that wall.
That's what it was doing and that was causing the stone to come off and sliver. But it's also the way the stone was related. It was like, I don't know how to explain this, maybe you could tell me, but instead of where the.
It's the way they ran the grain.
The grain, yeah, the grain, and instead of, the grain is facing the outside, so it's falling off and.
Right, it's a sedimentary type rock and they, it's just like you said, like rings on a greater layers. If the stone was on edge here and each layer is like this vertically, then the face of the stone peels off on later time. Which is what's happening on some of the stones around the base of the building. And it may need replacing some of the stonework and that may affect some of the cost of that. Because most of what our focus was, was taking care of the space on the inside during some initial repairs, but.
But you do, you have to stop the water. I mean, and, and you can't really do the repairs until you make sure the roof's good, the downspouts are in good place, you're getting the water away from the roof.
In a couple of years it'll just, it'll be right back.
Yeah, and then, then you gotta, then you gotta figure you can dry the building out, but until you do those things, your, your problem's gonna continue and even get worse.
Well, your comment about the sealing of the stones was a problem, it, that is a problem. There may be some sealers that will do the right job, we haven't discovered yet, there's a good firm that we work with that makes historic products that are coatings and sealers that actually breathe. So that you have a chance of fighting that problem from some of the more traditional sealers that were put on brick walls and school walls and things like that. And if you didn't put it on when everything was super dry, still trapped in moisture, a lot of the corner joints would pop out and that's why they have to get, that's part of the period, obviously. Yeah, it sounds like you've been through a lot of experience.
Yeah, when they did the HVAC system, they ran the drainage on the inside of the walls because they, they determined that they couldn't run it on the, on the inside. So they went on the outside, you know, that's very ugly. They, they didn't want to take the risk of running it down the inside because of the leaking. The saddles run off, however, they connect it into the drainage tubes. And so I think that did help because I don't think the plating commission has had a completely saturated wall. That wall facing the east was so dirty and wet. And he had, it was, it was more.
The drains that I saw, and you had it go, you know, from the guttering system into the inside of the building. But are you saying the drains on the outside too?
Drains on the.
Um, so, yeah, for the HVAC system, the comments, they run on the inside of the wall. It's not attractive, but they, they didn't want to do it any other way.
Yeah, they didn't do anything to cover up any of the pipes that they put in because I guess the contractor just put pipes in. What we would do is come back and either enclose those pipes or put them in a place where they're still on the inside, but more attractively to the character inside the building. That's part of that, once we make sure it's not leaking into the wall. And solid stone may have to be repaired, but mostly it's gotta be dry.
Anything else? Nope, back to our original idea, what we was asked to do is look at the problems and identify those and come up with some ideas of how to, how to solve them and what's going to cost. So we've kind of done that. So I'm gonna give this information away to Jerry and he's gonna talk to you about how, the ways that are available to people. Oh, this is up, this is to, that's to the floor, that's the one.
I'll put it in about ten seconds.
That's all right, we'll, we'll do another section. It's gonna be too nice to figure.
The next step is to take a look at how projects like this might be funded. And really there are three ways that projects are funded. One is by using cash. And no matter what you choose to do, if you choose to do anything, that's the first thing to look at, are there funds on hand that might be able, you might be able to use for your cost. Second is through grants, and has already been discussed. Grants are few and far between, but some are historical aspects or maybe some grant monies. And you certainly want to explore those to the extent possible. By and large, most folks pay for these types of projects by borrowing money. It's, we borrow through loans, we call those loans bonds. A couple of types of bonds, general obligation bond, and there's a lease rental bond, has to primarily be the size of the borrowing. So larger borrowing, we definitely would use a lease bond to become a constitutional debt bond here in Indiana. There are a variety of revenues that will be used to pay for those bonds, one of which is property taxes. Occasionally we'll find counties that have human funds established that aren't being fully utilized and sometimes those human fund revenues can be used to repay, pay bonds. But more often than not, we look at creating a new property tax, a new tax levy for, specifically for debt service. That is a debt, a debt service levy. Any, in more recent times, we're seeing more counties look at income taxes as a means of paying the bonds. Income taxes would be either a county option income tax or a CAGI tax. Here in Tipton County, we have a 1% CAGI tax. Typically don't use CAGI because it's more of a property tax relief vehicle. So there's not that many dollars available for bond repayment. The new dollars that come up are embedded within the general fund by and large. The edit tax is another tax, you're already at a quarter percent. So you're a combination of CAGI and edit at one and a quarter, that's the maximum rate you can enact there. And those dollars are already being spent for a variety of purposes. You could have a local option income tax, it's primarily to limit the amount of growth in your general fund or your control levies. With that, you would have the opportunity to consider a public safety tax, but a public safety tax only goes for operating expenses. You couldn't use a public safety tax to pay, to pay bonds. Sometimes you do some switching around, if there's a public safety tax, sometimes you use the public safety tax money to replace costs that may have been paid for with edit. And then frees up the edit to do some things. So there's some mixing and matching, we can sometimes do a public safety. More frequently though, we see folks using what are referred to as a supplemental income tax. It doesn't have a name, I just made that name up because I don't know what else to call it. But here, this involves using a lobbyist, drafting a piece of legislation that would go before the general assembly, may or may not be approved. But that would create a, a new income tax and every dollar collected from that tax would be directed just to the project, just to the jail project, just to pay for the cost. Once the jail's paid for, then that tax, tax goes away. It is, there's a long process to go through, it does require going to the general assembly and there's no guarantee that that's approved. But there are a number of counties that have enacted this tax, it's Davis County, Wayne County, Randolph County, Perry County, just to.
Gary, when you say jail, you mean jail and courthouse?
Yeah. Jail and courthouse, sorry.
If it's put together like that.
Right. Randolph County had a combination, they had a, it's an old hospital that they renovated to courthouse annex and also renovated the courthouse itself. So it could be used for different types of structures. There are some limits on the entitlements of general obligation debt, that was 2% constitutional debt limit. So Perry, Tipton County, you could only borrow about four million dollars of the general obligation. So besides the projects that are being contemplated, more likely than not, we'd be looking at some type of lease, lease financing. The other threshold has to do with the use of property taxes to pay for a project. And if the cost of the project, not the cost of the borrowing, but the cost of the project exceeds 1% of your gross assessed value, that's before any deductions, or 12 million dollars, then you have to go through a public referendum and that would have to go on, on, on ballot. You're not limited to that if you choose to use property taxes, you could always go through a referendum of a smaller amount of bond issue. And if you're to do that, that, that debt service levy would be outside the property tax caps. But most folks tend to try to not go through that referendum process if they don't have to. The success rate is something less than 30% for any construction. Interesting, I was in Perry County and it took them about three years to go through this process. They did go through a number of public meetings throughout the county. Once taxpayers understood the condition of the jail, there is, there is a lot of consensus that something needed to be done. But the majority of folks would prefer an income tax over a, over a property tax. Every county is different, every county, there's ninety two counties and there's ninety two different solutions. Except for Lake County, they probably wouldn't adopt the income tax. They're the only county in Indiana that has an income tax at the present. These are illustrated project costs, as Spike has pointed out, you've got a fairly broad range of all options and each of those options have different price tags. So you're at the very, very early stage of this. And as you start making choices, first of all, with or not being moved forward, there's a process that the architects are engaged to look at things more closely. The construction manager is engaged to look at the cost more closely. And we begin to get a far better picture of what those costs are going to be as you go down that path. We really don't know the cost until the construction bids are received and that's one of the very last steps to deal with. So this is really more illustrated than, than not at this point. But construction for the courthouse, we just picked a number of three and a half million. For jail construction, we picked a number of three million, eleven million, three hundred and twenty five. For jail construction, we picked a number of three million, eleven million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand and a co- combined number of fourteen point eight million. And based upon what we've discussed so far, these are probably high side estimates of, of the various options that are considered. This is probably on the high side. Another cost to be taken, uh, taken into consideration is land acquisition in the event that you select a site that is required in the land. Uh, pick the number there to just as a placeholder or just to recognize that there's costs of that. And then the next cost is for capitalized interest. When we borrow money for a lease, uh, we create a typically nonprofit building corporation. There's other ways to do it. But that corporation issues bonds on your behalf, uses the money from the bonds to construct the facilities. And once the facility is completed, leases the facilities back to the county. Schools do this all the time. Wasn't for lease financing, we probably wouldn't have schools in Indiana. But, but, but the issue there is that while construction is underway, we don't have any money to make the interest payment. So we have to borrow that interest payment upfront and we call that capitalized interest. So we want inclusive money to capitalize interest under these options as well. And then there's, uh, bond issuance expenses. There's underwriting fees, legal fees, accounting fees. There's all kinds of costs to go along with it and we need a placeholder for that. So if we're looking at a courthouse at three and a half million dollars, now we, it could, you, we could find that the total borrowing may need to be four million, two hundred and fifty thousand. For a, a new jail construction of a little bit, man, would not be uncommon to find that the total plot borrowing cost may be in excess of thirteen and a half million. Both projects combined, uh, could be seventeen, could be seventeen million dollars. So we think this is probably worst case scenario, probably high side estimates. And if you go down this path and make the choices, it's very likely those costs will be, will be less than this. The lease payment, that, the, once the building is completed, that lease payment has to be sufficient to retire the debt. Projects such at, at this size are typically repaid over about a twenty-year period. And if you look back over time, we would see that interest cost may be five to six percent. So again, to be conservative, if I just pick the six percent interest rate, and over twenty years, we would have a lease payment for the courthouse of about four hundred thousand. For the, for a new jail of about, about one and a quarter million and for both projects combined, a little over a one point six million dollars per year. Interest rates are at historic lows. Perry County, we issued bonds, they issued bonds, uh, about a week ago and the twenty-year bond, the interest rate was three percent. I can't tell the future, Brad, so I don't know what the interest rates are going to be tomorrow or the next day or a year down the road. But I do know that the interest rates are historically low levels. And, uh, just to illustrate it, a three percent interest rate could reduce that four hundred thousand dollar payment to about three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Could reduce our one million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollar payment, uh, to about nine hundred and ninety-three thousand. And it would reduce the one point six million dollar payment to about one point three million. So interest rates are very low. Refer to Federal Reserve Board saying that they would want to control rates on, through two thousand and fourteen. That I can tell you, um, rates change every day. There's all kinds of factors and things that people don't know about that cause rates to change. But it does suggest to us that if moving sooner may be rather than moving later, there's a greater likelihood that the rates are going to go up if rates going down. Now, if you were to translate this rate into, or property taxes again, using our high estimate for interest rates, what we would find, it would take about a nickel on the tax rate for all the courthouse improvements. It would take about fifteen cents on the tax rate for the, uh, jail new construction, or a total of about nineteen cents. If we translate that and look, what, what would that, uh, how would that affect a typical homeowner? And there is no such thing as a typical homeowner, homeowner. About an eighty-eight thousand dollar home in Tipton County, that average tax bill would be a little under a dollar a month for the courthouse improvements. It would be a little over three dollars a month for the jail, they were combined at about four dollars per month overall, just ballpark numbers. If, if we had current interest rates, uh, that, those numbers would drop by about twenty percent from, from all the same here. So a courthouse improvement from eighty-eight thousand dollar home would be just under, uh, nine dollars per year. With the jail construction, it'd be under thirty, just under thirty dollars per year. And, uh, for both combined, it'd be about, about thirty-eight dollars per year at, at current interest rates. The other, uh, approach, if we were to, uh, ask the General Assembly for permission to establish a new tax, and the way that would work, uh, if they were to approve it, they would simply give the county the authority to enact the tax. It would still be up to this council. Uh, to make that, that would still be your decision. It's something you would have to decide. Uh, but just to, rough numbers, and again, this is based upon our higher rates. We would give about a two-tenths of a percent tax rate for the courthouse, about a six-tenths percent tax rate for the jail, and about an eight-tenths percent combined. At current tax rates, current interest rates, probably the, the two-tenths of a percent is probably about right. For the jail, it'd give you closer to half a percent. If combined, it's probably about, uh, point seven percent. Now, you'll notice that if you say illustrated tax rate of a hundred and twenty-five percent coverage, you'll say, what the heck is that? Uh, coverage is to take care of Murphy's Law, which is, if it can go along, it probably will. And income taxes, unlike property taxes, are volatile. They tend to change with economy. And I've got experience with income taxes, you know exactly what I mean. And so all we want to do is, uh, enact a tax that would not only pay for what we think those payments are going to be, but provide for a cushion. And that way, if something did happen, there's going to be a cushion associated with that. Now, what we've done, uh, more recently with projects is combine this, called property tax backup. And that is purely an insurance policy. It's something that, that there's no expectation that that tax would ever be levied. But by combining those two, we're able to eliminate the need for any kind of reserve account. And we're also, uh, uh, able to reduce the interest rate a little too. So it's, it's like buying an insurance policy, basically. And so most folks are, are comfortable in doing that because there's very little likelihood that that tax would ever go up. And this, this table gives you, gives us an illustration of about how much addition, uh, created for typical, uh, families with, uh, with taxes incomes of fifty to, to one hundred thousand dollars. If you choose to do it forward, there's a whole host of decisions that have to be made, not only in terms of construction, financing options. It is not uncommon to do the combination of financing options. We can, you can look at funds on hand. Uh, you could look at, look at, uh, the mission, uh, existing edit revenues. If some edit revenues are sufficient, maybe the settlement doesn't need to be as much. And one of, look at property taxes in combination with, with the, with the, there's all kinds of combinations. This is simply to illustrate some concepts, what other counties have done, just to, just to show how, just what those possibilities might be. But that and how do they answer, uh, any questions. You can tell it's flawless. I'm losing my voice.
Well, thank you very much for doing that. I guess it worked. They came two different nights a couple of weeks ago and presented it and there was, there was more detail and there was a few people from the public here. But, you know, I appreciate them coming back and helping with the council because this is my third time to hear it. So, um, I think there's, there's, there's some things in both projects that, you know, I'm, I'm pretty excited about. I think there's some things we ought to do. It's just a matter of, I think it's a process to go through. You know, I got a few more months, so you guys have to go through it probably. But, you know, I think, I think y'all look at it.
The, the one thing you probably ought to consider if you're going to use the income tax route, by about December, most of those bills are finding their way to people's laps and tables and stuff like that. So you, you probably need to leave with some legislatures early on in this and, and, and create a lobbying effort to get that done. Because it, yeah, if we get past, what, December? Then what happens is your only avenue is to get attacked on to another bill. And you, you had our own bill there with our local representative supporting that and somebody down there pushing it through the right places. It's, you know, it's a spaghetti factory down there and you gotta have some help.
Well, as we... They always say you never want to watch people making sausage law.
Yeah. As a result of our, our, our public meetings, we had a couple, three things kind of bubbled to the top at the end that we heard both nights. And some things that, that, uh, if, if there's interest in this approach or some form of this approach, there's two or three things that need to happen. Uh, one thing you guys, uh, the commissioners, the people was, the council people that were there, the public was there. Wanted to see a, uh, a broader approach to community awareness, you know, talking, us, uh, to go out and talk this project up in different places. Maybe go to your local Juana's or, or service organizations. Uh, make the meetings available to, uh, uh, in a school or someplace and then give people an opportunity on more than just one occasion to come and hear this, get your input and get some sense of where the community really is. I don't see that as being twenty meetings, but I can very easily see that as being three or four, and plenty of opportunity. The other thing is, is if this, um, uh, additional edit tax is plausible, then some, uh, discussion needs to happen with some lobbyists and some legal assistants. We've talked to Barnes and Blumberg. They are, uh, they are currently your bond attorneys. They are more than willing and capable to, to do that. And the cost of that would, would not be an impact at this point. And we'd roll over into whatever, uh, kind of funding solution in the, in the financing of that. Then the other thing is, uh, if we take this thing to a legislator or really to any kind of financing process, the worst thing that can happen is you get there and the answer is wrong. Or it's too high or too low. And I'm not saying wrong is just necessarily too, uh, too low. It could be too high. And there needs to be more work done, uh, as you guys narrowed the particular scope. We're interested in doing these, we're interested in doing those things. And there's a process of, of project development that will hone those choices down and, and, and also hone the numbers down. So when we go to whatever financing process we have, then we know that the numbers we're talking about are, are deliverable.
For, for instance, site, to meeting, to a site, that you say, this, this is where we need to be.
And, uh, so there's, even though this is a lot of conceptual, if reality is, then, then there needs to be some more work at, you know, on what we're doing. And, uh, the cost of, of that, uh, would be, we'd have to sit down and look and see what the cost of that actually would be. Be based upon the kind of scope that we'll have worked and we're looking at. A few public meetings and some, uh, some design development, uh, approach to where we start to, uh, really enailing that, what we're going to do. And what actually we're going to affect, Mike talked about the, uh, uh, what to do about the exterior, you know. That research needs to be done and the costs associated with that. And, uh, even though, um, we're, we're not, you know, we've given a good estimate of this and we're not too, too easy to throw, throw numbers out. We spent a lot of time trying to get to where we think it needs to be, but there, at this point, there are probable costs. There needs to be work done to hone that in. So if the interest, the interest is in the county to begin to work towards this thing, then some, some activity needs to happen. Community awareness, discussion about, uh, activity towards some kind of financing, uh, uh, solution. And also developing our, our numbers and, and, uh, our design solutions. And the sooner that happens, the sooner you get there. So, any questions?
What are the counties they're talking to right now?
What are the counties?
About, about jail renovation. Are you, are you working not only in Tipton, but also for...
There's several other counties working on jails right now. Washington County's working on a jail, Scott Cazur, uh, working on a jail. Perry County is just, uh, kind of starting with construction on theirs. Dearborn. Those aren't all our projects. Those are just, just projects that are underway around this thing. We wish that were all our projects.
The majority of the counties in the state are, have issues with their jail. They're all, they're probably...
There's a handful of counties who have addressed courthouse and jail projects, uh, over the last ten years. Uh, what, maybe thirty percent, uh, of them have done that. A lot of counties are coming to San Diego, I mean, they're just, and, and some are worse and some are doing better, but, uh, you know, some, some of them are shipping huge numbers of people to other places and that's, that's a cost that, you know, avoidance that you need to be, so.
So if that happened to us, what would that cost be approximately?
That's thirty-five dollars per day, per inmate. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year plus the cost of transport, getting back and forth to court and whatever.
You discussed the number.
Uh, right now, you're, you're, today, you're forty-five, your, your design capacity is twenty-seven. And say you bend that a little bit and then say you, you get thirty in there. So you're talking, you know...
What, what's likely to happen is, is somebody will complain. And then that brings in, uh, some legal ramifications. The first step they will do to that normally is set a, a cap that you can't hold any more than these. Your cap probably would be set at your thirty, you know. So, or twenty-seven, excuse me. So that means if everything above twenty-seven, if you're above twenty-seven, you've got to address and fix it. And that means that everybody above twenty-seven, you're sending someplace else. And with the numbers you're looking at...
Big team today. If I had to ship them out and save for three, three hundred and sixty-five days, it'd be two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ten hundred...
Is any, anybody...
Two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Four hundred and fifty dollars. Now, the question is, is where are you going to take them from? You know, because once you get to those, once you get to those kind of numbers, it's solid, you do go to one place.
But also when we were doing those two evening sessions, Doug brought up the point that the legislature, the last session, really was tampering with the potential of sending the D felonies back to the counties. So instead of the state housing those D felonies, if anybody sent somebody in, we might get them back.
That will be on the table again this year, whether it makes it through. The bar association bites that pretty hard. Sheriff's Association bites that pretty hard. But at some point in time, it's probably, it's going to happen.
And, and, and it's a safety valve for the state.
Yeah.
Because right now, if they take them, they got, they got to, and they make you, to take care of them, then they got to pay you to take care of them.
I mean, that...
Take care of them and say, okay, we're going to, you're going to keep them, then all of a sudden, they're not going to pay you for them.
I, I think the state views that as a way to try to control judges. I really think, that they think that if, if they do that, then the judges will change their sentencing proper, uh, processes and stuff, you know. I don't know, unless you have better luck with getting judges to do what you want to do, uh, in, in this county, that doesn't generally happen. Judges make sentences they think are right and they try their best to help you out when they can, but they tend to go where they think they will be going, so.
Carrie, I have a question for you. On the lease rental revenue bonds, is the eleven million, is that something that we can go with in that? What do you say? Is that something that can be borrowed on that lease revenue bond?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I had the experience, that's how we did our city building and, and one police department, bar department, that now is not big, it's three garage. And that's how we did that.
We, we did, Elkhart did.
And it was very easy. I mean, it wasn't a, I mean, it wasn't a hard process to get through.
It's down over time.
Yeah.
Of the lease rentals.
I just didn't know if there was a limit, if there's a cap.
Typically, you have...
And that was twenty years.
You have a smaller bond issue. Actually, they're obligation bond, but, but since you got to have a limit on it, unless it's a small number, typically we look at lease financing, use flexibility. Uh, but that general obligation one is only four million dollars, so.
You could do the courthouse probably with that if you wanted to, but then you're tied up on your...
Their own money.
And they'll pull that to pay off, so.
But they, with a, uh, an edit, you, uh, Gary touched on this, you, you make that, uh, that legislation very specific to the facilities you're looking at. You want to make it broad enough to catch the facilities you're looking at, but it's broader than that. Because that way, the money that comes in can't be used for anything else. And whatever you save over a period of time, if there, if there's money left, then you use that money to pay the bonds off. If the archer wants to, wants to pay, that goes away.
Typically, with that coverage, that extra amount, that, that's another idea. For some things, the courthouse can be done over time. For some things, the courthouse can be done over time, you can use that coverage as a source to pay for some projects over the course of time. As long as it's earmarked for this project. And then whatever you have left over can be used to prepay bonds. Typically, municipal bond has a call feature, head feature kind of depends on the market, but right now, maybe eight years. But so after a period of time, a lapse of the year, you start prepaying those, those bonds up early. And on Perry County, the command is, is about a twenty-year bond is probably going to be paid off in fifteen years.
And what did their legislation do for it?
This passed, this passed general assembly, they, they passed the inactive tax in October, we think effective, uh, January, uh, January 1st. And started proceeding from this year. And then that's another source of income that we want to look at carefully. Uh, oftentimes, you'll be collecting income tax rather than during the construction period. Your lease doesn't begin until after the construction period. So there's gonna be money that's plugged during that construction period that can be used too. So there's all kinds of, there's things to look at and some opportunities to kind of reduce the overall cost. What we're trying to do here is just worst case scenario.
Keep it simple.
It's always very kind of like to say, well, gee, if, if we're a little wrong, it's better. If, gee, it's wrong and now it's a lot better.
Hi, can you recap about why it's important now with this, um, with the legislature and the timing?
To spend some time with these guys and that guy is how far, what do we want to do in the Oriohs? And how far do we want to do with that? How do we want to move some things around? So we need to define that scope a lot closer than what we've got now. Take some of these options that we, that you didn't even see tonight and get that honed down. And the main thing with, with the jail, seriously, it's like...
Even though jail's a bigger project, it, it, in some ways, is simpler. Because when you decide...
Once you have a design, there's really no more than one.
Once you say this is how many beds we want, it's really a mathematical progression, you know, to meet the code. So it's not, it's not terribly difficult to tie that one down pretty quickly. And I think we're very, very close on that square.
Let's take a public wasn't in favor of spending three million dollars on the courthouse to bring in that fifth floor. Is there some time, at some time, can we look at utilizing the old jail for storage?
Well, yes.
But I mean, that as a, you know, a sort of a...
That, that kind of goes back to the same discussion we had now. You gotta really sit and look and say, who's, who's using these records? Who's gonna have access to them? What's gotta be closed? What can, what can we actually archive? And those kinds of things.
You might say, what do we gotta do to courthouse to secure it for, for past there? Get the water secure?
Exactly.
Get, get it in so that it, the deterioration happens.
Those are the, those are the key points.
Those, I think, you need to put in here. Whether you do that through a, a, a general obligation bond or whether you do that through your funding on a yearly basis or something.
Well, the elevator and the stairway is pretty, pretty key too.
Once you start down that road with the elevator and stairway, you might as well do the extra space because you're going to put in those parts.
Here's the one that you guys don't want to forget. You've got elements in this building that are under structural stress. It's, it's not gonna, I mean, will, will it happen? Don't know. But it is to the point where you've got more load on these floors than they were ever designed to do. And, uh, if I'm gonna look at priorities and say, what, what do you think our priorities are, Spike? I would, I would hit the, the building preservation as far as the envelope is concerned. And what to do about these stories? Get the load off these floors. Protect this structure. Kind of what Bill said, on to the next step. Get the load off these floors.
Well, part of the reason for the story to tell we moved the fifth floor somewhere else is to take advantage of that space for the people that are in the courthouse working here. They're jammed in the corners and, you know, you're working on old furniture and papers all over the place and so forth. And it's just not a good environment. But then also, just the entrance and the, the building itself, which is, the second stairway takes out space on individual floors. So it's kind of a, a dilemma game. When we move people around, we have to find temporary places for them to be there and...
Does the council want to make a motion tonight? Vote of confidence, whatever you want to call it?
Spike, to this question, do you have any idea of what this next step requires?
Yeah, but I'm not gonna tell you because if I'm wrong, now I don't want you wrong.
I mean, one of the things is...
I don't know if their vote of confidence depended on that because then we begin October and so forth.
You know, for instance, we gotta get with the lobbyists to find out what that's gonna be there. You know, I've got a pretty good idea what, I think you'll probably charge you, but still, I'm, I'm speaking for somebody else who...
We can use a range of that stuff.
So if there's only, what, a thirty percent success rate to go through the way you're going to transfer?
That's for a referendum.
Or a referendum ballot?
Yeah, that's for...
What if, what if forty-nine doesn't make up the percentage?
Well, I don't think we might really have a lot. It's a topic more like, I don't know, special, we could have tests.
If you let the referendum process and it's denied, then you have to be very...
Like, you're banking on that.
The referendum itself takes, I mean, it's, it takes a lot. You have to get that rolling down, so it's not...
And it, it's got some service costs associated with these things too.
Right.
Uh, it's just not... I think you put your efforts into getting your, your legislatures to do what you want them to do. And you get the right people in place to make sure that happens. That's, you know, that, that's by far the less stressful way for those county to go.
Well, I think it's, well, um, we actually are public alone with the, with the legislators who are being involved. If they have, if they're, they'll address that.
I think that's one reason those public awareness meetings are too important, not just to give you...
Insurance.
But also to accomplish the legislative, the legislative...
I'll say something about the, the income tax that, your English is correct, you're wrong. Uh, the state has, you know, beginning to boost you towards the income tax solution opposed to property taxes. One of the reasons that, from my experience, in my opinion, where it's favorable, these, these results are favorable on a pretty regular basis is you're doing exactly what they want you to do. First pay?
Well, it's, it's overall...
Right.
I would never speak for the generals.
It, it appears that way.
So, tax is a fair tax. And Ms. Kelly, if you put on a property tax, you will not be supported because there's too many people that own big masses of land. And you put three, what'd you put down for agricultural land? Uh, the, the amount was, uh...
Three dollars.
Three dollars?
Seventeen cents or something.
Yeah, three dollars. Okay, so somebody owns five acres of ground, they're paying fifteen thousand dollars a year, plus their home and everything else, so...
And some people are pregnant?
Right, so, you know, some people rent. So that's, it's not a fair tax.
Well, we're, I mean, with, we know more aged people too, to where putting a finger load on them or...
And, and a lot of the older people are, are landowners. If you're not, that one, you're not gonna pay that right now.
And that's, that's true around most of the...
Is it not feasible at all to, to use the upstairs of the, this jail? That whole floor is not being used?
At the jail for, for jail?
You know, I know, I've been up there a couple of times, you probably were too. We, they talked about that in a couple of different studies, but you don't have your, your vision again. That the problem with the jail setup is the three hallways don't allow to get you segregated, to get people in and out, and for the jailer to see them.
The jail, the existing jail problem is your staff. You can do anything over there, but it's gonna increase your staffing. And every staff position, full, every twenty-four hour staff position typically digs five people. So, so if you're increasing the twenty-four hour positions, that's why you get eight, because some of them are gonna be there twenty-four hours. And I don't know what, what, by the time you pay a deputy and, and benefits and, you know, what, what, sixty thousand or higher than that?
No.
So, say...
Jail!
Well, I mean, you gotta pay their, you gotta pay their tax, your taxes, you gotta pay their insurance.
Their benefits, their actual benefits, their insurance.
Say it's fifty, that's still four hundred thousand dollars a year. And that's, that's...
It's, it's the physical layout of the cell block.
Right.
That causes that problem.
And I think, Spike, you went on, you went up back there in the hall with me. You know, back in the hole, that's where they're talking about. It wasn't built to bear the load.
Right.
And how do you get the prisoners up and down? I mean, we're not even all that.
A D A compliant.
I'm worried that elevator in this building is to take prisoners to the courthouse. Guys have been talking on my shoulder about costs that are kind of all over the place. And to be fair with you guys, I, we just gotta sit down and look at that. With those, you know, the question is, uh, you know, dude, we gotta really talk about how far we gotta go and what, what the lobbyist needs and those kinds of things. I'm, I'm just throwing a number out there.
Well, but, but really, even before the lobbyists, before, we just wanted to know what the community needs. Because we want to see the community support, and then we'll go to the lobbyists. So you really don't need...
The timing is a first accomplishment if, if you don't kind of write all the reports.
Yeah, I mean, we can take what we got and go do that. I mean, we can take this and, and go someplace, uh, but, you know...
This is sufficient just to do what we currently have.
But, but I think you've had at least three meetings, public meetings. And it looks to me like you get about the same people here at the same time. So, so if, if, yeah, so if you're, if you're going to do it, you're gonna have to take it on the road to them, because obviously, they're gonna come to you.
Just to address the question, the, uh, next year, you're playing with interest rate. And that's totally you guys' decision, but you're playing with interest rates and construction costs and this kind of thing, so...
But we're printing more money, aren't we? It's fixed down.
Yeah, I'd have to go out next year for a sling.
Construction costs going up probably pretty... Because there is an escalation in projects and we are seeing an increase in it though.
So do we want to make a motion tonight? Anybody want to make a motion? In the interest of the time? You don't want to?
I'm not, I'm not going against the project, but I don't, I don't wish to maybe see about the commissioners next move.
Well, all you said was we'd like to take it to the public. And that's, that's exactly what the consensus was. I've seen it with people. I've seen hard men...
Is that what they want us to know, to help us in? Like, they're asking us to figure out how we're gonna fund this additional cost.
We've taken it to the public.
We have to, whether it's now or later, you gotta take it.
Right, I'm talking about funding it, though. If, if they know where they came from, I...
Oh, that's why, do these guys come to meetings? Well, if we can't fund that out of courthouse renovation at it, then there's something wrong. We've got plenty of money in there. So I think it's...
Well, thank you very much for making that presentation. Appreciate it.
So, so what's our next move?
After what I've been trying to find out last ten minutes.
Well, I'll start...
Are we making a motion or just... I guess we're consensus.
Yeah, as a consensus, I would just, I would say that I am supportive of the three pieces that were on the board last and one of the public input. So if the commissioners, from, from my standpoint, I would like the commissioners to move forward to have them do the public input piece. And pay them out of, uh, courthouse renovation seems appropriate. But, you know, if we're gonna base anything on moving anything forward or not doing it, it's gonna be on the public's say. So I think we've gotta have that piece.
I support that.
All of the members, say aye. B?
Aye.
All of the votes? Somebody can tell the commissioners where...
Is that good?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll take the lead, as Gary alluded to. What we've had is pretty good information and we're, so we're ready to go do that. And we would rather do that much sooner rather than later. So, uh, if we can get together with, maybe you have for me to talk a little bit about how we set that up and get the commissioners to talk about that. Because we don't have a lot to do. We gotta put slides of Gary's slide in there, that's it.
We gotta meet Monday morning.
Thank you, guys, for your time. It was a long meeting, we appreciate you.
So if you do, when you do your meetings, it might be nice to do one in the eastern area and then go up and do one in the northern part of the town.
So, Florida.
Somewhere, I mean, it's gonna do a kind of, yeah, yeah, somewhere up in the...
Go to the southern school.
That area.
Yeah, a couple of locations.
Well, you can, I mean, you can open a private park, you can do it there, you can, you know, do it in the...
I, I will tell you, kind of based on history, you're gonna get kind of the same turnout, but...
You probably will, but the pipeline is it's open.
Yeah.
And if people don't go, that's...
If, if you got a Juana's Club, if you got a Chamber of Commerce, those kind of places where people come, you'll get a better crowd. And if you set one up in Sharpstone...
No, I think we do the mixed thing.
So can you do a celebration of the world we had?
Yeah, yeah, halftime.
If they want to set it there, we can all get... Okay, so, uh, like, it's all we need for, but, and, and you're thinking something north, something central? And any other ideas?
Body timeline, it'd be nice to have something, if we can have a morning session earlier and late. Because we hear a lot of people talking about, oh, if the meeting was late, I could come, oh, if the meeting was early, I could come. So...
Hurry, mix it up early, late?
Gonna get a morning, play a day of sleep.
Okay.
I think, you know, when we went through all that with Eon, trying to set up meetings and try to be, I mean, that would be a lot of community involvement and money with that. And, yeah, you may not get the handful of people, but it's there.
But you may, you get the opportunity.
Right.
They'll basically have the screen.
Okay, good. Uh, I think we have one other item on our agenda.
Get out of your way.
It's not our agenda, but she's in wait, Jill's here for something.
But you are here.
Yes, I am here. Um, each one of you have a projected cost breakdown for the probate, the loose probate documents in front of you. And, uh, we did a presentation here, I think it was back in May. And, um, Vicki told me to come back and reintroduce the cost to somebody who were not, were not here when we did the first one. And, um, so I came back to, and I gave you, uh, the same thing that was in the, the first folder. The cost breakdown of the items that we need for the probate records that we are housing for the family. Uh, we have currently backed to, I think our earliest is eighteen forty-five through, uh, early nineteen hundreds, as well as lots of order books, sheriff's, property books. There is, there is probably a hundred and forty-five books, but what I'm here for tonight is just the loose documents on the probate records. Uh, we estimate about sixty-six hundred probate records are what we currently have. Not changing the circuit court records and the, the books. But we did a breakdown and we estimated the, the cost to be about sixty-four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Uh, we broke it down over a two-year period of time and commissioners gave us five hundred dollars for this cost already earlier this year. And so now we're, when I came in May, we were asking for twenty-seven hundred dollars and twenty-one, twenty-seven hundred dollars and twenty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. So we're asking for, for the final payment this year. And then for next year, we would ask for the thirty-two, twenty-three, fifty-eight, and for next year to complete the probate. That would be...
And that will be funded through the judge's plan.
Is that what it's done?
That's what we discussed.
Okay.
You have to put it at the end, but it's...
Because we have now surpassed the five hundred dollars. That was that item that made in March, that the commissioners had given that to us. And we just didn't choose that up. We are now using our personal, our files, files to try to continue on. We have surpassed the valve, we're at about fourteen hundred of the probate documents have now been cleaned and rehoused, so...
How does that, does that inspire spending, spending money?
Yes.
Have a ten fundraisers?
We can have fundraisers.
Yeah, and then teach her.
Yes. Probably the first weekend of that. We have several fundraisers throughout the year, but there, there's probably six or seven per year that, that we actually do. Um, they do not, they do not raise a lot of money for those. There are still new, new options that we have and try to raise larger. Um, some grants are, are going to be among those that we're gonna try to get. But we have to get our ducks in the ring, we're saying, in order to even be able to apply for those grants. So, and that's what we've been doing. We've been through the MAP, which is a museum assessment program. We've been through CAP, which is a conservation assessment program for our collections. Um, we are now in STEPS program, which is, um, you know, gonna be an additional couple of years. I'll check on that, CAP and that for sure, and then we'll be able to then apply for better grants.
Uh, I want to make a motion concerning this item. Any discussion on it? Any discussion? We're gonna pay, what are we talking about, the judge's right, when he came in last week?
If, if we build that, that budget...
Thanks. Anybody else have anything else?
There's, uh, one, one matter, uh, many of you are aware of, probably. The, um, part-time janitor is, has, has been suspended in his work because the funding for his, his line has run out. Uh, there is one final paycheck that needs to be paid to him in the amount of a hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-two cents. And they will need to have an additional appropriation for. He has to be paid his last paycheck. It stems from him having gotten raises. We haven't been able to determine how that is happening, but it used up the fund quicker than, of course, in the year that he, than what had been anticipated. So I had to tell him that he could not work until, unless there were additional sources of funding made available to, to fund his part-time position. But that last paycheck is, is a hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-two cents. There is not sufficient money to cover that paycheck in that line.
Is that line currently in the negative?
It will be with this payroll. It is not, it is not prior to this payroll.
How much do you need to fund at the end of the year, fifteen dollars?
Uh, maybe fifteen dollars.
What, what rate do you want to pay?
Uh, the maximum that is allowed is eleven dollars and twenty-five cents. He was being paid eleven dollars and fifty-three cents. So his, his rate exceeded the, the salary ordinance and, um, so this last paycheck is, is figured out. The maximum allowed in the salary ordinance is just eleven dollars and one hundred and two cents.
In, in twenty-eleven, midnight, something.
Right.
So if you're thinking about adding dollars in for, for, I would say that we ought to set a rate so we could calculate. I'm not opposed to that.
Right.
So we jump from nine dollars and suddenly we take...
To eleven, eleven fifty-three. Thirty fifty-three, I think, is what the boy was being paid. And the maximum for the salary ordinance is, is eleven.
So basically, his position's been terminated?
His position has been suspended.
Suspended.
Suspended, okay.
Until last week, we have funding that, that will support his salary.
The thing I did, you know, because I, I was a couple different times, I didn't ask about some things. I said, either we transfer money in the courthouse budget to that line, that we can transfer into one thousand. There's no money really available to transfer, we additional appropriate. Or, you know, if they wanted to make an, edit a project and do a contract of some sort or whatever, you know, there's some funds there. But I still came back. I think besides the fact of looking at the payroll as it goes through, you know, it's one of those things where the hours worked and all that kind of stuff, there's not a good handle on who's doing what.
Supervising.
And so, so now Anne is working a lot. She's gonna crank up a lot of comp time, which I know we had a discussion with the commissioners on comp time. So we're gonna pay overtime comp time eventually because of all the earning of it. So I, I don't, I don't like appropriate money just to fix it, but we're gonna spend more in the comp time if we don't...
And if we don't appropriate and get him back in doing the jobs that he was doing, of course, the comp time and the custodian will all continue to climb. But the employee that has been laid off can file for a... Okay, can, can you pull up the courthouse budget and save address, whether we transfer to cover this? Or even a little extra so we can get additional preparation? We wanted to fund that out, but we can't fund at a, at a rate that's above our salary ordinance. I don't know how that happened and...
We've, we've tried to figure out how, how it's happening. We haven't been able to put the specific mail on that process.
There needs to be a...
Well, who puts in the new rates? Who puts in the, after we make budget next, who puts those in?
You set the rate.
Right. Who types them in?
The department.
The department head can, can...
We don't, we don't set the rate.
You set, you set the, you set the, the parameters of that, of that salary between nine dollars and some odd cents and, and eleven twenty-five, or only...
And the total fund?
And the total fund for, for that, yes. So it...
So what you see is there's someone in the office that did that, changed that rate. No one else in our county has access to that pay rate. So to answer the question, who did it? Was it the old auditor or someone in the office?
Yes.
I think there should be a paper scale as to, like, when there's a, when there's a rate increase or request from a department, it should be signed up by a department head. You sign up what the auditor, and then the table work, you know, then, and that's...
It's an official act.
It's an official act, because this is, I mean, one of the, they're authorized to go, not to eleven dollars, but let's go up to the salary. Which is really...
Yeah, double checks, we have, we have stopped that in.
So transferring a potential?
When was it changed?
January of twelve.
Twelve was changed?
Yep.
And he went from nine something to eleven something?
He went from nine, maybe nine ninety-six to eleven fifty-three.
Okay.
The first day of January twelve.
So what we asked is, is our other custodian, did they get, or they within that?
She's making max, she's making eleven twenty-five. That's what I'm understanding. And so Jay was, no, she's...
She's salary.
She's salary.
She's salary, she has to look and make sure that, that that's been entered right too.
Is courthouse sixty-one on its location? No, sixty-one's got a council.
Yeah, five one.
You know the locations, is that what is it?
One sixty-one.
Is it?
One sixty-one is the courthouse. The, the line is, uh, the, the part-time payroll is, is one one nine zero zero.
So, oh, you asked what happened to your house and that tax break?
Not being ready? That's what we done.
That's it's ready, but we wanted to, with this meeting, make a direction to actually get that letter out. I think we, we moved, we took a letter, to send him a letter.
Yeah.
Um, we wanted directions, I wanted to do that.
I'm all...
And Brad has that resolution ready then for next year?
I have the resolution, but...
I'll be happy to give a letter, just to the director, to be that. I think it was one minute, I, I, I was, I was gonna do that.
That's what I thought of it.
As, you know, forty times ago, but I'm, I'm, so we...
We just need to notify that the current property owner, that we're gonna have a hearing. So, and once we notify, there are, there's a time, we've got thirty days to have a hearing, forty-five. So if we've notified a week or two, that the hearing will be in our October regular meetings, which means we're all in a regular meeting. We'll actually adopt the budget, have that hearing and whatever else, you know, I'm okay with that. And I'll, I'll finish the resolution. And set out a copy and we can have it cleared, that effectors. I'm okay with that. So then I would, I would, I would continue with the trust manufacturing abatement termination request. That... did send the letter to the current property owner, and I'll complete the resolution for our, our hearing at our regular October meeting.
Second. Set that down, Beth. All of the favors, say aye by saying aye.
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 All of the pros.
Be a bigger screen.
Because then you're out.
No, I can't, it's, it's eight hundred and eighteen pages. Eight hundred and eighteen pages. No wonder I can't find it.
All right, we have to deal within fifteen days. There is, there is one issue in the law that, that, uh, I think they're picking issue with, that the.
Was that he is?
And that includes.
It's only for.
The loss of interest in their products or services. Yeah, so, yeah.
What I understand.
No, that's coming from, that's coming from the actual legislation itself.
This abatement was on the part of his corvette, his abandoned or vacant building.
I bet his wife is getting used to that.
Somebody called a couple of times, I went out, I had to flip it over for a good day.
Are we deciding to, uh.
Looking for his gun, he had a worth carrier gun.
The Chandler situation right now, where, where we.
It looks like if we transfer a thousand dollars out of supply, uh, there's about twenty-five hundred dollars in there.
We didn't buy them.
We can get about, we can get about six weeks of, of pay at, at around three hundred and thirty dollars. We have to cut the hours somewhat to adjust his, his income, his hourly wage. Wage, we can probably get six weeks of, of wage out of that, and that would permit him, permit us time to look, see if there's any, any other options. Six weeks if they're clearing to, uh, in October.
Make sure you're not permanent, if we do.
On the center rate, we want it up.
Well, the rate, the rate technically, I think, really still is the commissioner's, but I think it's an appropriate rate in the ten, in the low tens, somewhere between nine, whatever he was, in eleven, whatever a decent, the correct raise would be. Um, or, since we overshot to begin with, you know, do we take it back to the nine ninety-six for the rest of the year? Man, it's, it's really the commissioner's judgment, we just make the money available.
That's it, we make a thousand dollars available, except if they want to, as long as they don't vote over the set.
Right.
And three percent, um, threes moving around ten to twenty-five.
But since he got eleven fifty-three, out of the nine thousand dollars.
Versus seven hundred.
I.
Commissioners would have to make it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm just okay with making some money available. So you want to do the thousand from suppliers?
I think that'll, please, give Greg some time to work numbers and figure out how much, I think he did through the end of the year, and talk to the commissioners, see if they want to go with the rate.
I, I'd make that motion.
Second.
Can we move in second?
The trade is, the transfer.
Transfer, yeah.
Supply line to the part-time line, five thousand.
Courthouse budget, transfer a thousand, so the part-time custodian can work a while.
To the, the, how about let you go to supply line?
Yeah, twenty-eight hundred on the.
Courthouse supplies?
That was at the first of the month, I'm looking at the ledger from the sixth.
There's been movement in segment? Right, my second.
Yeah.
All of the favors, say aye by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the pros. You have a business, the county.
Where's mine? I did.
The, uh.
Did you?
The insulator, I don't think, I don't.
Okay, we're going to look at those next time.
Okay.
Motion to the jurors?
Wait, wait a minute.
We don't call you in unless we need.
Any other?
We should talk about the transfer from our health department records.
There's nothing, we have nothing in our cabinets.
Nope.
Well. That was, Dina was going to, um, she said that, Greg, do you know about that, that Jane Lottson, that he's going to go ahead and do it, and I told her she couldn't do that. She's going to transfer health department records into our county treasury line, and I told her she had, that they had to have some type of approval.
Right, um, no, the, um, Wells had, she had this money, but she had available, that could be used to go.
I'll say the county truly.
Yeah, I was a county.
He's been, he's using it with the health department.
And that, it wasn't paid?
Yes, but we're out of, out of money on county attorney light.
Seems to be a great, great thing. Motion to the juror?
Motion to the juror.
All right, juror.